Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to order. It's our Monday, January 10th, 2022 meeting. Would all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. And at this point in time, I'd like to introduce the members of the Commission that are here. To my far right is Jamie Hine, who's an alternate on the Commission. Next to Jamie is Jeff Kohan, a Commission member. To my immediate right is James Fitzsimmon, also a Commission member. To my immediate left is Steve Allison, a Commission member. And to Steve's left is David Parent, who's an alternate on the Commission. At the lower table is Cheryl Ann Tubby, who's our Recording Secretary. And sitting right in front of us all is Kevin Pajini, who is our Town Planner. And I'm Jim Saitter, I'm the Chairperson of the Commission. I'd like to start off with consideration of our minutes of December 13th, 2021. Any Commission members with any corrections, additions to the minutes? If none, I'd entertain a motion on the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the minutes as submitted.
Have a motion to approve the minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kohan. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstain.
Good. Moving on, our first order of business is a continuation of a public hearing. It's a zoning text amendment for the Planning and Zoning Commission for data centers by special permit in the IX and the I-5 zones. Mr. Allison, if you would, please note all additional correspondence for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I can.
We have a revised set of amendments. Is that on? There we go. Sorry about that. We have a revised set of amendments, redlined, date of revision, January 5th, 2022. Correspondence from... Andrew Mays and Eugenia Mays dated September 8th, 2021. Correspondence to the City Clerk of Meriden mailed 9/9/21. We have correspondence from our Town Planner, Eugene Lifshitz, mailed 9/8/2021. Interdepartmental referral from our Fire Marshal dated 9/16/21. Interdepartmental referral from our Town Engineer dated 9/29/21. Another set of zoning text amendments, revised date, October 12th, 2021. A document cover sheet entitled "Chicago, Illinois Data Center." It's a multi-page document, and it starts with "Why Chicago?" A document from Richard Leroux from the Wallingford Land Trust dated November 3rd, 2021. Correspondence from Gregory Tochi dated January 5th, 2022. Email correspondence from Stephanie Massimino to the Commission dated January 6th, 2022. Correspondence to the Commission from Adelaide Cupfer dated 1/9/2022. And I believe that concludes the documents.
I'm sorry, there's also a clean copy, non-redlined, of the zoning text amendment. The proposed zoning text amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allison. Just before we get started, I'd like to just make an announcement. We're not going to be taking any action on this application this evening. The reason for that is our Acoustical Engineer, Sound Engineer Gregory Tochi, informed us late this afternoon that because of COVID protocols, he is not able to attend the meeting. We had initially discussed perhaps having him join remotely. However, that really is not an option. And also, speaking with him, he felt it would be much more beneficial that he be in person to answer questions from Commission members as well as from the public. So, Mr. Pajini is going to give a presentation. We'll have the Commission have the opportunity to ask some questions, as well as the public. After that, what we, at least what I'm planning on doing with the approval of the Commission, is scheduling a special meeting the early part of February to continue this application. Our normal meeting for February is the 14th. However, Mr. Tochi indicated that he is not available on that date. So, we will work with him, as well as the Commission and our Corporation Council, to arrange for a special meeting on the application. But I thought it important, as, instead of postponing this meeting, as I knew there'd be a lot of people from the public that were out here that may have questions. And some people that are here this evening may not be available to come to another meeting. So, we'll have a presentation again from Mr. Pajini. And we'll entertain questions and then go from there. So, with that, Mr. Pajini, you have the wheel.
So, over the last couple of months, we've listened to the public, as well as comments raised by the Commission up to this point. We've consulted with other municipalities, contacted sound experts, and have done our own research into this use. We tried our best to understand every concern that has been raised and believe this regulation will allow for a responsible development of data centers in the least invasive way possible and with the least amount of impact to surrounding neighborhoods in the IX and I-5.
If you gentlemen can turn the lights down a little bit. Thank you. Also, if I could, just before Mr. Pajini gets started, again, he does have a presentation. There are some copies of the presentation that are on this table. For, after his presentation, if people would like to pick those up, certainly feel free to do that. With that, Kevin?
And I just want to make a note that most of this was based on the Sound Engineer attending the meeting. So, there is a lot of stuff regarding sound that we can defer to the next meeting. So, the summary of changes that have been made since October. We added a minimum setback of 500 feet from the data center buildings to residential properties. Added a minimum setback of 750 feet to electrical substations to residential properties. Further setbacks can be required as part of the special permit application process. We added a definition for background noise level, as well as changes to sound mitigation strategies for HVAC and emergency generators. And as we mentioned, we consulted with Gregory Tochi of Kavanaugh Tochi Associates. And he's a board-certified noise control engineer and has experience working with data centers. And we also added regulations for generators, including allowable time for testing and documentation requirements. And these were primarily questions for the noise consultants. I could just go through them quickly, but I won't be able to answer them as well as he would have been able to. Basically, he told us more power usage translates to more noise. The major contributors to noise are the HVAC systems and the emergency generators. Wet cooling is less noisy than dry cooling. Data centers in our climate would be using dry cooling systems. Most facilities are using dry cooling systems. Low-speed fans, barriers, and other acoustical noise controls can be used to reduce the noise of HVAC units. Example, air intake and discharge silencers on ventilation units. And require that any testing of emergency generators is performed during loudest ambient noise levels, typically during the day. The permitting process, so allowing data centers as a special permit use does not mean any data center will automatically be approved. Special permits are used to apply additional conditions to uses within a zone and take into account the location of the use. Special permits also allow the Commission to determine that the use is not appropriate for a certain property if they deem to find that. We have listened to and understand every concern that has been raised, and we feel that this regulation will impact the neighborhood in the least invasive way possible and with the least amount of impact to the surrounding neighborhood. And again, any application would likely also be subject to inland wetlands approval. And any application wishing to utilize the tax incentives available will also be subject to municipal host agreement approved by the Town Council. Monitoring, this was brought up during the course of the public hearing. And it was discussed at length whether to allow ongoing monitoring or not. And we came to the conclusion just that monitoring requirements can be addressed through the conditions of approval when an application is presented to the Commission. And monitoring can be required post-construction to ensure compliance with approved sound levels before a certificate of occupancy is issued. And further compliance testing can also be required when any changes are made to the building as a condition of approval. Any further monitoring beyond this would be complaint-based and dealt with as other zoning land uses are handled. We currently do not have a use that we monitor for sound on a regular basis. Emissions, based on the review of the EPA Clean Air Act requirements, regulations only allow for 50 hours a year for use of emergency generators for demand-response purposes, which includes peak shaving. Peak shaving might also increase required generator sound controls. All generators must also comply with Connecticut DEEP permitting and emissions requirements for emergency generators. The use and duration of non-emergency use of generators can also be made a condition of approval through the special permit process. And applicants must provide documentation of when generators are going to run, how they will be used, and for what purpose they'll be used for. We conducted just a search through scholarly journal databases, and that resulted in no direct links to data centers and human illnesses. Traffic, it's anticipated that a data center would generate at a maximum 30 to 35 vehicle trips during the peak hour of the surrounding roadway network. Parking areas are also very minimal, sometimes only requiring one space per 3,500 square feet. So, a 100,000-foot data center might only require 29 parking spaces. And any application that exceeded the 100 peak-hour vehicle trips will be subject to special permit requirements, as they already exist in the zoning regulations, including the submission of a traffic study and funding for a peer-review consultant hired by the Commission. And this is just an example, data center from Ashburn, Virginia. It's approximately a 350,000-square-foot building and has roughly 115 parking spaces, most of which seem underutilized. I actually contacted Loudon County, Virginia, and sort of explained that the earlier data centers that they approved had more parking. And as they realized they didn't need the parking, they allowed less and less. For comparison, the Wallingford Train Station parking lot on North Cherry Street has 70 spaces. The proposed minimum required parking for data centers in our new regulation is one space per employee at peak shift. And according to a 2014 report by CBRE Group, the number of employees in an average data center is approximately 30. This was brought up during the course of the public hearing, whether or not data centers have been built adjacent to residential areas. We did find a number of examples across the country where data centers are located, sometimes as close as 80 feet to residential neighborhoods. From our research, we do recommend a 500-foot setback to residential properties, which will likely need to be paired with other noise mitigation strategies to achieve compliance. Our current zoning regulations require a minimum 500-foot setback from residential properties to some industrial uses in the I-40 and I-20, primarily uses that tend to be more noisy. Most uses currently allowed in the IX and I-5 zones do not require a setback of this size. This is an example from Virginia, where it's approximately 160 feet from the building to the residential property line. And this is roughly a 300,000-square-foot data center. Electrical substations adjacent to residential areas. We also found examples across the country where electrical substations were located sometimes as close as 230 feet to residential neighborhoods. From our research, we recommend a 750-foot setback to allow the actual buildings to screen most of the noise from the substations. This could be paired with other noise mitigation strategies to achieve compliance. And the sound produced by the substations would also be required to be included in the facility-wise noise study. And that's just an example from Arizona, where the neighborhood had some complaints regarding the noise from the substation. And it's roughly 230 feet to the residential property line. And we, like I said, we looked into noise complaints from around the country, including Chicago, Illinois, Chandler, Arizona, Loudon, Virginia. And these neighborhoods were not properly protected during the approval of data centers. Many of these communities do not have adequate requirements for data centers. Enlist them as an allowed use, not a special permit, as is proposed here. We could not find any other community proposing the level of regulation and requirements being presented today. Submission of a sound and vibration impact analysis also appears to be a unique requirement specifically for data centers, as is the peer-review. And our noise consultant has reviewed the proposed regulation and has stated that they are protecting of neighboring residential properties. Some comments have mentioned wanting an acoustical engineer hired by the Commission to perform an independent sound and vibration impact analysis beforehand. We agree that a second set of eyes in the analysis will be beneficial, but we don't require an independent analysis for traffic studies and are not concerned that fraudulent reports will be submitted by a credentialed professional engineer. The analysis and peer-review will both be certified by a professional acoustical engineer. And that was the last slide.
Thank you, Mr. Pajini. You know, as I mentioned, again, the Sound Engineer is not here this evening to address questions that the Commission has or the public has. But certainly, if people do have questions, they would be passed on and hopefully addressed at the next meeting. But before I go to the public, are there Commission members that have specific questions for Mr. Pajini on the regulations? Yes, Mr. Fitzsimmons, we'll start with you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Mr. Pajini, for your presentation. I received the copy when I came in tonight, but I had done some looking at the regs. So, my first round of questions are regarding the proposed text amendment. On slide number two, it says consulted with Gregory Tochi?
Yes.
And I made a note here, and I'm not shy to ask this question. Does he represent both municipalities and applicants? Or is he one-way only represents municipalities? Much like a law firm sometimes does plaintiff work and sometimes does defense work. Do you know if he does both?
I believe he does both, but I don't have a firm answer on that.
Okay. And then, slide number six, under the emissions. It says applicants must provide documentation of when generators are going to be run, how they'll be used, and for what purpose they'll be used for. That statement, I guess, is a question. Is our expectation to be consistent for each applicant? You know, if ABC Company and XYZ Company are both data centers, they should all have a standard?
Not so much a standard, but we just want to know, you know, what they are going to be using the generators for and for what purpose and how. So, it's essentially just getting as much information as we can from the applicant regarding the generator usage.
Okay. The slide above that was monitoring. And I'm on record with everybody I'm sitting with and the person in the front row who works for the town and the person in the second row who works in your office regarding monitoring and conformance compliance. So, my experience up here has been mostly related to traffic. You know, when we have a special permit, it's all about the traffic. And then, we can rely on the police department because the Chief of Police in Wallingford is our legal traffic authority. Who would be the backup for a noise issue that comes up of an approved applicant?
That's a good question. Well, the police enforce the noise ordinance now. So, I believe through that, that's who is the enforcement for noise in the town.
So, is a zoning violation of noise would be referred to not the law department, but the police department?
Yes.
Okay. And I guess because of the comments you talked about, because, or from the presentation, it says any further monitoring beyond this would be compliant-based and dealt with as other zoning land uses are handled.
Oh, complaint-based.
Complaint-based, excuse me. So, would that also be the zoning enforcement officer?
Yes, I believe she would take the initial complaint and then follow up with the company and see if they would rectify the situation. And if the police had to deal with it as a noise ordinance problem, they would, I guess. I think they have the monitoring equipment, whereas we don't.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, I'm not shy. And I would share with you, the monitoring piece concerns me the most. I know other people are concerned about other pieces of this. But if it were to be added to the regs and we were to go through all this exercise, and if indeed some, it's the monitoring. You know, the assurance for protecting the town, protecting neighbors, protecting others. And I don't know what you could do between now and the next meeting to get more information related to monitoring. I mean, and the reason I asked about the consultant, okay, is because we've had the experience, Mr. Saitter and I and others up here, where we want to hire someone for a peer-review of, well, you know, they can't, you know. So, now we're left with kind of going further down the baseline as to who else we could use. So, I guess that's why I asked if our, the person you've consulted represents both sides. And then, on the slide you have regarding the Ashburn, Virginia location, you cite a 2014 report by CRBE Group. Is there something more current, or that's the only study you have related to the number of employees in an average data center? Because I would imagine there's been significant change since 2014.
That's all we can find, but also other municipalities I spoke with said it's generally in roughly the, like, 30 to 25 range.
Is this a use listed in the ICE-T traffic study book? In the ICE-T traffic study book?
No.
It's not? My last question this round has to do with your last slide. Peer review versus independent sound analysis. And I guess, as you could, my first question is on the monitoring related to, we're going to be left trying to find someone to do a review of someone else's information. And, you know, I never think, but the review we use for traffic, which is a comparison they have to give, is they're only looking at their data. They're not doing their own data. And if I'm reading your slide correctly, we're not doing, we're not recommending our own independent analysis. We're just recommending a professional review of the analysis that the applicant submits.
Correct. And Allison felt that, from an engineering standpoint, that she doesn't believe a professional engineer would put his credentials on the line to submit a report that doesn't have correct data.
Okay. Are you aware, has the Wallingford, unfortunately, I think of various uses in town that have triggered noise complaints, large uses. Has the police department ever had to hire someone for this, or has it strictly been zoning? I know you're newer to Wallingford, but have you discussed this at all with the chief?
I have not. The only one that's been brought up is Thurston Foods. I don't know where that stands at this point.
All right. Thank you, Kevin. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzsimmons. Other Commission members? Mr. Hine?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Pajini, when you consulted Mr. Tochi, did he have any suggestions regarding the monitoring? Or the suggestions that you have in that monitoring slide?
He kind of alluded to, you know, the fact that monitoring would be very tough for us if we don't have the necessary equipment. He doesn't, he's never seen a place recommend monitoring after the fact.
Okay, so that is something that he'll pine on?
Yes.
Okay. Did, but we do have the equipment then, correct? Our police department, you believe, has the equipment to do at least a testing?
I believe they might have something, but nothing to the effect of what an engineering firm would have for monitoring equipment, no.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Mr. Hine, can I just, maybe just interrupt you just for a second? Again, you're asking some questions on monitoring. Mr. Fitzsimmons has asked some questions on monitoring. Obviously, Mr. Pajini has, you know, not been here for an extended period of time with the town. I noticed our corporate counsel is here, Attorney Small. And I think perhaps she may be the appropriate person to speak and address some of those questions.
So, the police department did have the monitoring equipment, which has to be continuously calibrated or whatever. It was, I think, the last time I had a conversation with them about it, no one had been currently trained in that equipment. We did, however, I think within the past year, had a complaint from a resident regarding a neighboring industrial use being suddenly very noisy. And the police did investigate it. It turns out the industrial user was doing something unusual. They were waiting for something to be repaired, and they conceded that they were quite loud. But they resolved the issue just through dealing conversations with the police and getting the repair made as soon as possible, so it was resolved. So, you know, in a circumstance particularly of this nature, I would suspect we would hire a professional to do it. Otherwise, they would have to talk to the chief about having somebody retrained again and then keeping the equipment calibrated. You know, something of this nature, I think you would want somebody professional to be doing it.
An attorney small, then, the steps, what would the steps be? We go out and we monitor, and we find that they're in violation of that. How would that progress?
Well, we would give the notice that we would give anyone else who's been in violation. And if it's, if they don't look to correct it, then we'd have to make a decision whether we're going to bring in injunction action against them.
Thank you. Again, I apologize for interrupting you, Mr. Hine.
That was helpful. Thank you. And so, I just want to, following up on that. We can require, you're suggesting that as part of these regulations, given that it's a special permit, we could require monitoring as a condition of approval?
Correct.
Okay. What if we did not require that on a data center project? What would What, and you then had the data center built and you had a increase in noise that violated these regulations? What would you do then?
It would be the same thing that she just described. You'd send a notice of violation, you'd go out and investigate the complaint and then obviously step up enforcement action if necessary.
Okay. So the reason why I'm asking the question is just so that I'm clear. In each of those cases, it would be the town that would be paying to have that monitoring done?
Yes.
Unless we required the applicant to pay for the monitoring as a condition of approval?
Yes.
Because that's, I agree with Commissioner Fitzsimmons that that is an important consideration here. If I could just move, Mr. Chairman, if we're, if this is okay, if I could move to the actual regulation?
Oh, no, absolutely.
Okay.
I don't have it in front of me currently, hold on.
You all set?
Yep.
Okay. I was looking at paragraph 5A, which is on the first page. Section 2.2, or I'm sorry, a proposed new section 4.9. C. 5. A. Do you see that there? It begins with submission of a sound and vibration impact analysis.
Yes.
About halfway down there, it, there's a reference to submitting this analysis to ensure that the noise to be admitted from the proposed development does not raise the existing background sound level. And then if I can skip down by more than 5 dB A. You see that there?
Yes.
Okay. I don't see anywhere in the proposed regulation where there's an explicit prohibition against an increase of that level.
I would defer this to the next meeting for the sound engineer.
Yeah, well.
I cannot speak on that.
Yeah, I, this is more of a, I'm not commenting on the level itself, okay? But this, that particular section is only dealing with the analysis, the impact analysis that has to be submitted, right?
No, it's the actual, the actual proposal cannot be increased by that level. So it's the noise to be emitted.
That's not how I read that.
The noise to be emitted from the proposed development does not raise the existing background sound level.
I sort of read that as we're requesting that a submission, that the applicant submit a sound and vibration impact analysis containing detailed information concerning all of this.
It's, the point of the study is to ensure that the noise from the proposed development does not raise the existing background sound level.
Right. And I think that's true. And I think the purpose behind that is because we want to make sure that the sound is not increasing
Correct.
to that level. Well, why not just say that? Why not have a separate paragraph that says that you cannot, any project, any data center cannot raise the sound level above, you know, that level.
We just thought it was necessary to put it in the actual study, but I mean, you could put this up as well.
I mean, I just think it'd be clearer and I think it'd be, you know, it gets, it gets somebody's attention a little bit better. Also, further down that paragraph, or there's a reference that it cannot create vibration levels to a degree perceptible to the neighboring properties.
That was a direct quote from the sound engineer.
I just want to know what, I think we should be clear as to what neighboring properties means. Do we mean a budding, directly a budding properties? Do we need, do we mean just properties in the area? I think that we have to be a little more detailed or direct on that because neighboring properties is kind of open to interpretation.
Looking for like an exact distance or, I mean, you can go, you can be very specific or you could be a little more vague at that point, so.
Yeah, well, I just think you're gonna, that leaves it open to interpretation and that could cause everybody, including your office problems if, because your office is going to be determining what neighboring properties means.
But also that's the point of the sound study is to, you know, understand, you know, what, what properties. I think we're getting ahead of ourselves a bit here by going that far, but.
I think, well, if we're going to go back and take a look at the language and make sure, I mean, I think these are things that I, at least I foresee as being a potential issue going forward.
I think if, when he was discussing that with us, you know, that was his exact language, was to phrase it that way, so. If you find that there's something, there's a better way to phrase it, we could discuss that with him and get back to you.
Yeah, I guess, Mr. Hein, would you like to offer some, I guess, some comments as far as what you would be comfortable or would like to see here? Or some, at least some suggestions to be discussed?
Well, I think even if you just use the phrase directly a budding.
But then it kind of, you know, if someone maybe a little further away complains of the noise, then that kind of doesn't protect them, so.
Well, then, or then we use a particular distance from the property. And what that distance may be is, you know, we would have to consult maybe the town, the sound engineer on that.
Yeah.
But I think just using neighboring properties, that can mean anything.
But it kind of, I think it kind of leaves it more open for, you know, whoever wants to complain can complain. And then there isn't a set distance, say you're not in a quarter mile of the property, then you don't have an argument or something, so.
Yeah, but I, we don't need to belabor the point. It's, again, I read that, that paragraph to deal with the submission of a sound and vibration impact analysis. And so when somebody submits that analysis to your office and to us, that leaves it open as to how far out they have to go with, because it's going to be dependent upon what they consider to be neighboring properties.
Well, I think when we, I don't know, say for example, the Amazon application, they submitted a noise study and it showed, you know, the noise levels in a certain area. So I think, you know, having mapping technology, something that can show you where it may affect the properties, it kind of leaves it open for that. So it's not so much as a set in stone distance, but we want them to tell us how far vibrations may impact from the development.
The other question I had is, if you go to the second page, 4.9. C. 5. I guess it's E, sub E. Where, it says where any side, front or rear yard abuts a residential property or property located within a residential zoning district. And then it sets out the minimum side or the minimum setbacks. What if you had a, I mean, is it possible in this district to have a, potentially a, another commercial property between the data center property and a residence, but still be within that 500 feet?
Oh, you're talking, no, that only applies if the property that the data center is on directly abuts. So it wouldn't apply if, say, you know, there's a commercial use in between or something. Because, I mean, that would be a, a per-application basis, I'm guessing. I don't want to be too restrictive, so we're requiring 500-foot setbacks from commercial or industrial uses. So we felt that that was the best way to word that without being overly restrictive.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we have, we're guaranteeing a 500-foot setback.
From residential property.
From a resident, no matter, you know, no matter what.
It has to be, you know, a budding, so you can't be in the vicinity necessarily, so. It would be hard to word that, I think, another way.
I just, I just wonder if there's a better way to do that because obviously we're asking for the 500 feet to provide some protection.
Yes.
And it seems to at least possibly create an exception where you have a property in between and then if there's a property in between, you don't get that 500-foot protection.
No, I understand what you're saying. I think it's hard to anticipate every single situation when you're writing zoning regulations, so.
That's, I think that, that's really, at least for tonight, I have other questions. I can hold off until the sound engineer is here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hein. Other commission members? Mr. Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I don't want to repeat what the two previous commissioners have said, but I do have a couple of questions. You know, monitoring is important and, you know, what I don't really see as far as monitoring is, you know, something specific in our regulations that, you know, deal with that at this point. You know, it looks like it's a suggestion, you know, an important task that needs to be done. But, you know, I would like to be proactive in the monitoring and not have to get in a situation where, you know, this place is built and then, you know, a cease and desist order is done, you know, because they exceeded some of the noise standards. I think it should be not as part of a condition of approval, but something solid in our regulations. And then, you know, there's a couple of other things, you know, same with admissions. I do have a couple of questions on whose responsibility is it? Because, you know, this is somewhat, in my humble opinion, a little complex as far as developing these regulations. You know, we're dealing with, you know, electrical substations and the noise emitting from that. You know, is that our responsibility or is that the electrical department? You know, do we have?
No, it would be our responsibility. I actually consulted with the electrical division and they said, you know, as far as the sound and the placement and the screening, that it would be zoning to really enforce those regulations as far as. But they, like, you know, zoning can't handle the, obviously the connection to the electrical, something like that. But they actually, they did have input on these regulations as far as the substations went.
So do they have suggestions on what those standards are? I mean, it's based on
Yes, they.
the size of, you know, the substation and.
Yeah, they included the language for the substations in the subsection 2 under F. So they had put in their suggestions as to the type of trees, the fencing and the location as well.
And that's written in the regulations?
Yes. So after F, subsection 2.
Okay, I'll find it, I don't see it. The other thing is that this is the permitting process. And this is page 2, the bottom, the bottom PowerPoint slide. And basically it says, "Application blah, 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 subject to a municipal host agreement approved by the town council." So, you know, what does that mean to us? I mean, the town council approved this municipal host agreement. And to be honest, I attended all the meetings where they, you know, debated this and, you know, approved it. But I'm not sure what they approved and how that, you know, relates to our, you know, authority.
Well, essentially, any data center, I believe, I could be wrong on this, but any data center that in town that I believe it's a 30-year agreement of $250, $250 million or more over a 30-year period would be required to enter into a municipal host agreement. So there's a certain threshold set by the state. That's why this whole process with GOT space kicked in.
Right.
So if it's a smaller data center, they would not be subject to that.
Well, yeah, I, yeah, I agree with it. But, you know, what are the specifics, you know, that we're going to have to worry about? Are we going to have to worry about anything when an application comes before us? You know, is this something that, you know, we should just copy the host agreement into our regulations?
Um, I mean.
I guess, Mr. Pugini, again, I think this may be a little bit unfair to you. I know we see, you know, Attorney Small, so Attorney Small, if you could please give some insight into this, if you would please.
The host agreement specifically states that the requirements that are in there do not affect this commission's ability to create regulations that are in fact stricter. And in fact, that this draft is stricter than what is in the host agreement. So it's, while it's mentioned, this regulation is not about a certain property. It's not about GOT space. It's about the zones and allowing the use in the zone. So it's written for that purpose. But it is stricter than what the host agreement is. The host agreement gives one very valuable thing. And that is that it gives the town the ability to be looking at the sound data when they're designing the facility. So that's, you know, that's something that you wouldn't have. It would be all on plans for you and then you, obviously you react to it. But this gives us an earlier step in the process to be criticizing or commenting on what they're doing. Your regulations are your regulations. You write them as you see fit and this draft is stricter than what the host agreement provides for.
Yeah, I understand that, but I'm probably not asking my question correctly because it hasn't been answered yet. There are some land use specifics in that host agreement that apparently are very restrictive. You know, like I said, I've heard what they are. My question is, do we need to build them into our regs so we are aware of them, we meet them and they don't conflict? Because, you know, I don't know if they can go back and, you know, review or revise this host agreement. That's all I'm asking. There is land use.
This commission governs the land use. So you write the regulation as you see fit. If it conflicts with the host agreement to the point where the host. If, if it conflicts with the host agreement to the point where the host agreement would be violated if they comply with your regulations, then that's a problem for the host fee agreement. That's not your problem, that's, that would be the town's problem. I don't, I don't see that happening, I think your regulation, the, the host agreement makes it very clear, it says in writing, the zoning commission can enact regulations that are more strict than what's in that agreement. We weren't looking to tell the commission what to do in terms of creating the land use.
Right. I get it, but still, you get an application, you know, they, we go through, you know, our permitting process. There is another regulation with the host agreement where, you know, I, I just want to avoid, I want to have it in front of us so that when an application does come in front of us, you know, we don't forget it.
We don't let...
Don't miss it. So, you know, is that the town planner's responsibility to pick up on that?
No, that's actually the, that's the applicant. The applicant has two things it needs to comply with. It needs to comply with the host agreement, and it needs to comply with the zoning regs, and it's going to draft a plan. They're, they're spending, if they were, if we're talking about something subject to the host agreement, you're talking about at a minimum of a two hundred million dollar investment. They're not going to do it wrong. They're going to see that they comply with the requirements of the host agreement and your regulations at the time it sits in front of you. And what, how it fits into the host fee agreement is not your problem, it's their problem, and it could possibly be the town's problem, but it is not the planning and zoning commission's problem.
Okay, so, yeah, we're getting to the answer of my question. When they come in, are they going to have to sit before the town council to go over their, their application to say they're, they are meeting the host agreement? That's all I'm asking.
Yeah, no, they don't go there for, for any type of approval, the, the requirements of the agreement are in the agreement. But in terms of the sound analysis, they have to be talking to the town to make sure that it's at a minimum, it's designed in accordance with that, but they have to comply with this, which is even more stricter than that. So that's what we would be looking for when they're doing the design phase. So if they do their job right, they're spending two hundred million dollars, that at the time they come in here, their position should be that they're in compliance with both.
Okay, it's not our responsibility, thank you. And I, and I guess my last point, I do have a couple others, but I'm going to just make this last point. I'm not sure, oh, when the sound engineer comes in, what I would like is kind of a demonstration. I don't know if he can do it, but, you know, he's, he's going to be telling us about the ambient noise without the insect background, and we can't have any increase of sound by five decibels. I'd actually like to see what, you know, if he could do a demonstration on, you know, what that, you know, impact actually is. And then, to wrap it up, you know, the, the sound and vibration impact analysis is, you know, really key, and, you know, it, it really gets into, you know, I, I guess, a professional opinion on, you know, what, what the, the sound and vibration is going to be. And I guess it's going to be based on, you know, the size of the building, number of, you know, you know, fans and, and all those things. And this will be kind of a paper exercise. And I'm, I'm just, you know, I, I, I think that, you know, being a paper exercise and then equating it to, you know, a real-life situation, I, I, I think, you know, something needs to be, you know, written in the, in the regulations where, you know, again, I don't want to get into a situation where this thing starts to operate, it exceeds the, you know, expected noise levels, and we have to, you know, issue these, you know, warnings and whatnot. But, you know, I, I'd, I'd kind of like to make it, if we could, just kind of a, you know, hard, hard stop. I, you know, I, I just don't want to, you know, have it get operating, and, you know, the, the analysis was wrong, and we get in a situation where, you know, everybody's upset. So I, I don't know if we could do anything to, you know, make that a little more solid in our regulations, but, you know, that's just a real concern I have is, you know, making sure that, that paper exercise really has all the variables included so we get a pretty good answer on this. And I'll, I'll, I'll move along, and thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Other commission members? Mr. Allison.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Puccini, for your presentation and for your hard work. I know we're in multiple revisions of these, and it's, it's not easy. Couple of comments that I've heard from the commission specifically regarding 5A, regarding the term neighboring versus a budding. I, I tend to agree with your analysis, Mr. Puccini. I think that neighboring protects more people than a budding would protect. And I think that the goal of these regulations are to protect the citizens of the town, the residential individuals that could be potentially affected here. So I would tend to favor the neighboring term, even though it may be more subject to interpretation. I think it protects more people. Regarding comments on 5E, and this is something I don't know. In any of the IX or I-5 zones, are there any mixed-use properties?
I don't know off the top of my head, but I don't believe so, because it's not really a district that has a lot of mixed-use type uses. It's either there's residential in the IX, or there's commercial or industrial uses.
I, I can't think of any that are, that are sticking on the top of my head, but would you be able to just check and see? What I don't want to run into is in E, where it sets a setback on residential properties, all of a sudden, if there's a mixed-use property, it is partially residential...
Right.
And a residence could be affected. So if we do find that there's even just one, if we could add residential and/or mixed-use properties to that to protect anyone in a residential or quasi-residential setting there. And then I'm still thinking about Mr. Hein's question regarding the in-between properties. I'm just not sure how to rate that, so, to be continued, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allison. Other commission members?
Just one...
Yeah, Mr. Perry.
A non-monitoring question. When you said what, how many people would be employed by the company, is that per shift or is that in total?
That's per peak shift, I believe.
Okay, so that's, okay, so that's shift.
So they may have more employees, you know, throughout the course of a day, but they said at any one time, it's generally twenty-five to thirty maximum.
Thank you.
Thank you. And, Mr. Puccini, I, I, Puccini, rather, I'm sorry. Maybe I'm having a senior moment here. Probably am. But I thought, at, at one point, we were in, we're having a conversation, and as far as, I know we were talking about, we have this sound study done, vibration, what have you. We have it all reviewed by an outside consultant, and they review it. I, I thought at one point in time, and again, maybe I missed it, but once the facility was built, then they would need to start the, the building running at, kind of at their peak capacity, and then you would go out and determine if they were meeting that requirement. I, I thought that that was something we had discussed.
Ah, yes, we discussed that on the slide, is making that a condition of approval.
So that's something, again, so that would, that could, that could be a condition of approval, that, again, we have, we have the, the study done, it's, let's say it's certified, what have you, by a, a sound engineer. But to assure that they are operating according to that study, it could be, if we had an application, it could be made as a condition of approval, that they would have to essentially crank this thing up and operate at their, their peak, peak operating approval, would have to run the generators for a specific period of time to show that they would then be in compliance from what they've indicated, from what the individual who did the peer review did, so we would know then that they were meeting that requirement. And then if they wanted to put additional computers or additional HVAC, anything additional to that, to that property or to the building, they would then have to come back, and then Correc would have to do another, another study, would have to provide some information to us that, in fact, the additions that they're doing or proposing would still meet the parameters of the original requirement.
Yes.
Is that correct?
That's correct. And we did, through, through research, find that they, you know, tend to change their equipment out every three years or so, so that's an important piece of that.
So again, any change out of equipment, they would, we would have, or they would have to show that, in fact, they're still staying within the parameters that were approved?
Correct, much like any other business, you know, if they change their facility at all from their original conditions of approval with a special permit, then they have to come back to the commission and, you know, show that their changes aren't going to impact those original conditions.
So it's not something, just a matter, I've shown it to you on paper, and someone else has said, on paper, yes, it meets the requirement, there is, in fact, you could require...
Yes.
Crank this up, and let's make sure that you, in fact, what you're, how you're operating is how you indicated, you, in fact, said you were going to operate.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I believe, Mr. Fitzsimmons, well, actually, I do have, before I go back to Mr. Fitzsimmons, who has one or two other questions. I'm just going back now, and again, I share the comments that other commission members made concerning the sound and vibration and some of the suggestions. I just go back to the, the, the landscaping. If you look at, on page two, where we're talking about, it's F, I guess it would be 5F, where it says, "We're any side yard, front yard, rear yard, abuts a residential property located in the residential district. You're going to have to have a hundred, a hundred-foot-wide natural open space buffer or a landscape buffer, you know, of natural vegetation, does not, if it does not exist with an earthen berm six feet high." Is that an either-or? Because, again, you could have, I'm not sure when we talk about a landscape buffer, what that, you know, what that would qualify for. You know, an earthen berm, when you're talking about an earthen berm, I know what that is, it's going to be six feet high, it's going to be, what, I guess, a minimum of three feet wide, it's going to be, you know, a hundred feet long, and then you're going to have to have evergreens, you know, planted in front of it, which seems that that would provide some screening. You know, and that, the, the natural buffer that may be out there, I'm not sure what that could be, or what would qualify as a natural buffer. It would seem, in some cases, you know, number two, if you would, being the earthen berm may, in fact, be more of an effective screen than, you know, than this natural buffer. So it, it just, to me, it seems like it should be, instead of more, more of an either-or, I would think, at the commission's discretion.
Well, we felt that the berm was necessary, no matter what.
Okay.
And, you know, the rest of the landscaping, we, we would prefer that they wouldn't, you know, get rid of existing vegetation if it is there, to put in their own landscaping, so that's, that's the way we wrote that.
Okay, maybe I misunderstood it, because it seemed like you'd have the, the natural open space, or you can have the landscaped...
And then also the hundred-foot-wide natural space buffer.
Okay, again, when I, maybe it's just me, when I read it, it, it didn't seem that, but if, if you could just take just another look at it, I, I could be reading it wrong, and if I am, I apologize.
Sure, I could change the wording to maybe say, you know, must have a berm or something to that effect.
Yeah, to me, I don't, again, I don't mean to wordsmith, but that may be, that may be, at, at least it would perhaps satisfy me, but, anyway, Mr. Fitzsimmons, I believe you had a question or two before we go out to the public.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I, I would like to wordsmith something. And I, I, I thought about the, the other commissioners' comments, and I, I was rereading the reg. I believe there's a difference, because, and I want to make sure I, I just get this on the record, because I do think, I, I marked up the comment, I, the, the proposed text amendment. This amendment would add data centers has an allowed use by special permit in the IX and I-5 districts. Correct?
Yes.
Okay, so that's the subject, that's the title, and then we make multiple references to residential property or residential zoning district. So I have learned from zoning enforcement 101 and, and sitting up here, it's always not the same thing. So if this is the IX reg, this would be a reg for IX, I-5.
Yes.
So you have a residential zone is abutting the IX.
But there are also residential properties in the IX as well.
That's, yeah, that, that's where I'm going. So, so I'm trying to, I'm trying to avoid a problem, right? So I'm just trying to understand the way you refer to both residential property or residential zoning district, so...
Because the IX abuts both the R-18 along Tankwood Road, and there are residential properties that are zoned as IX.
Okay, thank you. That, that's, that's the clarification, because, you know, but you, you stated it, so Tankwood Road is zoned industrial, or is it zoned R?
Tankwood Road is R-18.
That's, okay, that's where I'm going.
Whereas I believe most of North Farms, up to a certain point, is IX.
Okay, so, with, since we're not talking, you know, this is just a zone, it's a big amendment to the regs, so if I lived on Tankwood Road, I'm at a residential district, so it's not the measurement from, from my front door, it's a measurement from the district, the zone line.
Correct, yes.
Okay, so that's the clarification. If I'm in the IX, living in a house, it's a residential use, it's the distance from my front door to the substation?
Property line.
Property line, so if my house is on ten, ten acres, it's the property line from the ten-acre, not, not where the front door of the house is. Is that correct?
Yep. So it's any property line, yes. I don't know how it's...
I would, I would clarify for you, I don't think that's clear here.
Okay.
And, and Mrs. Torrey will probably tell you, that's been an issue on some other zoning enforcement issues, where it talks about front door versus property line versus usage. So, we, again, I don't, I don't mean, as the chairman said, I don't, I want to wordsmith, I don't think it's that clear to me what you just clarified. So, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzsimmons. Other commission members, any final comments before we go out to the public? Seeing none, again, members of the public that would like to speak on the application, please raise your hand, and then come, and I'll, I'll start on this side of, excuse me, I'll, one second, hold on, sir, please. I'll start on this side of the room, and when you do, please come up and, with your name and address. Yes, now, sir.
My name is John Conway, I live in Terrace Gardens. One question I have for the attorney before, I may have misunderstood what she said, but once these regulations are in place, you can't come back and review them and make them stricter? Is that correct?
When you, the, once the, any regulation, once it's approved, that's the regulation.
My question...
And, and, you know, an applicant, a member of the public, anyone can come back and look for a change in a regulation.
Both ways?
Yes.
More strict or less strict? Is that correct?
Yeah, anyone can, yes.
Okay.
Anyone is, it's open for anyone to come in and request a change in a regulation.
Okay, all right, thank you. Another thing is, is, I don't know really know how to word it, this deal they made with the electric company, I assume that they're buying electricity for cheap, cheaper than normal rates? Is that part of this deal?
I, I, again, as far as part of the deal, there, at this point in time, there's no deal on the table.
Okay, well...
So to say, you know, to, to, to give an answer on that, again, this is just simply a regulation allowing a... a regulation allowing a use.
Okay.
Now, once this regulation, if it should be approved, then an application would come and that would have a, a whole host of, uh, items included in it, which would be looked at at that particular point in time.
Mm-hmm. Now, um, I got sidetracked here. I'll just go on to my next question. Is, is, um, oh, what, uh, actually, what I want to say is, like, if this company does get electricity at a reduced rate, say for example, are the residents obligated to pick up the slack?
Sir, again, there, this is simply a regulation to allow, or a proposal to allow data centers as far as a use. As far as what agreements there may or might, may not be, with, if there is an application that comes forward, what discussions there may or may not be with the electric division or the town, that is a separate in, uh, that's a separate issue from what we're considering tonight. So again, I, I think we have to look at it, this, this is, there's not an application that we're looking at at the present time. This is just simply a regulation to consider data centers, you know, as an approved use under a, a special permit.
Okay. And I have, I have one more, one last question.
Certainly.
Okay. Um, I was, uh, the question I have is, um, if you invoke a special permit for the data center that are not defined in the regulations for a special permit, how, how does that work?
I'm not quite sure I understand your question, sir.
You're looking to invoke a special permit for this data company, right? Correct?
Well, not for a data company, for data centers. Again, let's step away from company.
Oh, all right, yeah, okay. Well, but they're not defined, they're not defined, uh, in the, in the regulations for a special permit.
What's not defined?
How you can give somebody a, how you can give somebody a special permit and it's not defined in the regulations for the special permit.
Again, I, I, maybe I'm thick here, but I just don't understand the question.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Again, show of hands, are you going to stay on this side? Yes, individual in the back.
Danielle Conway, 78 Tankwood Road. The property that my husband and I live at is at the very end of Tankwood Road. We would be abutted on two sides by the proposed, uh, zone. Pardon my shortness of breath, I've got an infant kicking in the ribs as I speak.
Take your, take your time.
So to that point, we bought our house about a year ago with the idea of a nice, quiet neighborhood to grow our family. And in a couple of months, we're going to be doing just that. So this is of a very personal, um, subject for us. So, um, our health and well-being for both us and our, our child is at the forefront of our thoughts. Knowing that multiple buildings are proposed, um, construction by the estimates I've seen could take somewhere between eight and 10 years, um, we're concerned not only about the diesel emissions from the backup generators, but during this extended construction phase, my kid will be in middle school by the time the last building is built. We also have to worry about the low frequency noise emissions and the effects that those might have. Um, I appreciate that Mr. Pacini has done some research into those possible health effects, but by my own research, I don't think there has been enough research to fully determine the potential health effects of living this close to one of these facilities. And frankly, we don't want to be the guinea pigs for that. We're not really, uh, not really looking for that. In addition, I know myself and the majority of my neighbors are on well water and we're concerned at the potential impact that that could have with massive construction, industrial buildings so close. Right now, we live across from a farm, our well water is pretty, um, pretty agreeable. On top of that, we're also concerned about displaced wildlife. I have a pack of coyotes that I hear very clearly in the farmland. You can tell when they've caught a rabbit, they're very vocal about it. If these buildings are now taking up that space, are they going to be in my backyard? Where are they going to go? Is that, am I going to be safe walking my dog at night? At this point, I don't see any requirement for an environmental impact study and these are some of the concerns that might be brought up if one were required. And as we've kind of gone through this process, as residents, we've heard a lot about, well, this use could be a lot worse and this use could be a lot worse and this use could be a lot worse. The way I see it, current zoning regulations has a lot of better uses for this land. We understand it's going to be developed. We like our town, we want the tax revenue, we get that. However, a lot of the current uses go home at five o'clock. They go home on weekends. They're not running on Christmas. Data centers are 24 hours a day, seven days a week. We can't get away. The sound is constant and that is a major, major concern. We're not anti-development. We're anti-24/7 imposition into our day-to-day lives. So, like I said, we've been in, in our house for about a year. We went to all the town council meetings, we followed the host agreement. Frankly, they kicked the can down the road to you guys. And with all due respect, I'd like to see that you guys take the accountability and don't rely completely on the special permitting process. You have an opportunity now to make sure that appropriate steps are taken and whether or not this is even an appropriate use for this property. Again, we're not anti-development, we understand and we knew we moved in across from an IX zone. But this particular use is of the highest concern to us. And to the points that have been raised about monitoring, monitoring is only as good as enforcement. And without that very clearly stated, we're not protected.
Excuse me, could, excuse me, can we just leave our applause till all the members of the publics have an opportunity to speak and then if people would like to applause, then please feel free. If you please continue.
So again, I feel that the monitoring language is great, but until you know what entity is responsible for enforcing, what, um, steps, whether it's you get a first warning, second warning, a fine, et cetera, because finding a huge corporation, they can pay the, to do the business and then we're still up the creek. So I think that needs to be much, much more clearly defined and whose responsibility it is. So ultimately accountability and it starts here with this commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Other members? Yes, we'll take the individual way in, yes, you, sir, and then we'll move, we'll move
Dave Ellis, 56 Old Lane Road in Wallingford. I'm the board of directors of the Wallingford Land Trust. So the Wallingford Land Trust is actually the biggest abuter to these properties. And I hear a lot of talk in the regulations, proposed regulations, special zone about residential restrictions and of course, that makes sense, a resident, of course, is going to be there 24/7 and care about it. But we also have open space, this next to this property. This property's, uh, this open space is one of the most heavily used species of property in Wallingford for outdoor recreation. We have our only natural waterfall in the town right there and there's always people hiking here.
Sir, if you could, what property are you speaking about?
Oh, this will be the, I'm sorry, the Orchard Glen property. It's off Barnes and Justice Road north is the access point, but it goes right between the Merritt Parkway and the IX zone. So admittedly, the, the Parkway is near it, so we're not talking about a pristine wilderness like in the middle of Maine, there is ambient noise. But we don't want the experience of walking into the waterfall to be on one side of the Parkway and the other side Bradley International Airport. So I think that the regulations for the special permit needs to also specify setbacks for open space and especially open space that is in, in some, in some sense developed as a outdoor recreational opportunity, so that that outdoor recreational opportunity is not, um, you know, wrapped. We've, one of the letters that Mr. LaRue sent you, we've asked for berms. Now, we're going to have to send it again to the new owners, whatever they take place. But we would like the regulations to include berms and setback requirements for open space that's used for public recreation. Another point is the monitoring and enforcement, okay? I, actually, I'm an IT professional. They rotate equipment in and out all the time. It's not like it's going to stay for three years. Equipment is going to come in and out on a daily basis for these, these places. Monitoring needs to be active, continuous, at least periodically continuous, with a protocol for enforcement and a protocol to pay for it. This monitoring is not going to be accomplished with a police department going out with a sound meter. It's going to be done professionally, it's going to be expensive and someone needs to pay for that. If we don't figure that out, we're going to have trouble. Okay? So we look for, you know, working with everybody. We, we're, we want to be responsible, this develop responsibly, but we don't want the outdoor recreational opportunities in Wallingford to be destroyed by such a development. That's my comments. Thank you.
Good enough, thank you, sir. Other members of the public? Yes, gentleman right in front, then we'll go to the gentleman in the back.
Michael Polanski, 1039 North Farms Road. This question or suggestion harkens back to what Mr. Hines brought up regarding the regulation or the text regarding setbacks. I would like it, the way it stands now, the way I understand it, there's really no defined what setback you're going to use or property line for all of the neighbors that, um, abut the property, ask that it be written that the rear property line that abuts the property in question be used as that point to establish the 500-foot or 700, uh, 750-foot setback. Makes no sense to use the front property line on the street side, measure 500 feet back and then use that as established as, well, we use the front property line, but it should be the rear property line that abuts the property in question, because that's what we're talking about. Mitigating that distance or expanding that distance that we have to be exposed to this structure that's going to be built that we have to deal with. So if it could be written in the regulation that it's the rear property line that abuts the property in question that's going to be developed, use that as it, to be established, because we all know that lawyers like to use, tear apart weak text and that they say, "Well, it was just said that a property line, we're going to use the front property line," which makes no sense at all. So I'm just asking for common sense to be brought forward and use the rear property line that abuts that to be written into your text, so we're more protected from that developed property.
Sure, and I understand it, sir. I think that that's, that's the intention and we'll certainly make certain that, that in, in the regulations as they're, uh, as they're modified.
Have it clearly defined, so there's no.
Yeah, that that would be, that that would be clear, so there wouldn't be any ambiguity.
No question, no, so that'd be great.
I understand that.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome. And again, the gentleman in the back.
Good evening, I'm Roger Norc, 77 Midland Drive. I've lived in the neighborhood most of my life. My mom is in the same neighborhood, she's 87. We watched everything happen last number of years. And when, uh, the IX zone was created versus residential area, it was created, um, by this commission with many, many considerations for the residents and, you know, we understand that what could be there and we appreciate that. And also appreciate the commission's, um, moving carefully on this. It's obvious the commission, the, um, town council moves a little quickly and I really appreciate the thoroughness that, um, people are going with. One question is placement of generators. Is that something that can be put in, keep the generators farther away from residential properties?
Uh, Mr. Pacini, would you like to comment on that, please?
Uh, yes, that would be part of the setback requirements as part of the building. So any generators would be considered as part of the building, depending, I mean, without seeing an application, without knowing where they would be, but that's what, uh, how I would describe that. I mean, we can make it more clear if it needs to be. I understand that without seeing an actual application, it's hard to know, uh, how they actually present these to a planning commission.
So I, I guess the question would be then, you're indicating that it would be a, a minimum of the 500 feet, is that correct?
Yes.
Which, which would be with the building itself, sir?
So as far as in front of the building or behind the building, um, that couldn't be regulated as far as how far that would be away from residents?
Well, it would, again, I, I guess I defer to Mr. Pacini.
I'm just guessing that they wouldn't put the generators, say, 200 feet away from the building. It doesn't kind of make sense from what we've heard, that the generators are generally right next to the building.
What I mean is.
I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think you're looking more, if it was put in front of the building, i- is that correct? It would be more visible to the, the front portion of the building, is that correct? Or, or looking to have it more, looking to have the generator, if there are residential properties in the area, to have the, the generators behind the building to screen from the residential properties, is, is that what you're kind of driving at, sir?
No, no, basically, um, to the north is residential and to the south is, um, IX. So if it could be on the IX side with the rest of the industrial development, that would be more beneficial to the residents.
Yes, Mr. Pacini, do you like to comment on? I, I guess.
No, I, I agree, I just, without, without seeing an actual application, it's hard to know, you know, where the generators are intended to be. But we had every intention of including them in the building setback, if that clarifies it at all, but we could certainly look into placement of generators and, uh, writing that in possibly, if necessary.
Okay, that would be appreciated.
Or I, I guess if I could, Mr. Pacini, that could also be a, I, I guess, a, a condition of, of a special permit. As there is, if, if this were to be, if the regulations were to be approved, as we talked about, that would be a special permit, that could quite possibly be a condition of the special permit as far as where that, where the generators have to be located. Because again, a special permit gives the commission a great deal of latitude on an application, unlike if it was just, you know, by right. So that's something that could be considered at that particular point in time.
Okay, that would be great. That'd be beneficial to the residents, I'm sure.
I could certainly add as, looking at, uh, under the documentation for placement of generators, something to that effect.
And, um, also, uh, receiving a special permit, whatever company brings the application in, gets the special permit and gets everything approved, is something that came up in the town council meeting also, can all of those approvals just be turned over to another company that they sell them to? Is there anything that says the company that goes through the entire process has to build?
There's nothing in, in the regulations and again, like with other, uh, other projects, you could come in and let's say you wanted to put a residential development in, you could come in, get your approval for a residential development and once you have that approval, you know, you could, you could sell that property to someone else and you have the approval. As far as, and again, this may be more of a, I guess, a question for, for our, our corporate counsel because, or corporation counsel, because with this particular, i- if it's a larger, uh, development that comes under the host agreement, I'm not sure how that would be, you know, would be handled. So perhaps Attorney Small, you could enlighten us all on that.
Well, first, land use does not govern ownership, so you don't have, they don't have the power to regulate that from a zoning perspective. So the, um, the host agreement does have language and requirements, if somebody were to assign the agreement to a new owner. So there's certain requirements they have to, um, and they do have to get the town's consent for that. That's a contractual thing in the host agreement, but it's not a zoning issue.
Okay.
Okay? They can't, they can't regulate about ownership.
Okay.
And so when legally, so like the chairman said, if, if you brought an applica, if you got an application approved for a special permit and you decided to sell the project, so this, the special permit gets transferred to the new owner, all the conditions that you were required to do. to do, they were, they are required to do. It would be binding on them.
Okay.
Okay?
All right. And again, thank you for either being cautious and trying to protect the residents. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. And again, on this side of the room, other than this young lady, anyone else on this side of the room? Well, take the lady in the, no, yes, you ma'am, and then the gentleman in front of you, and then we'll move to the right side of the room.
Jessica Polanski, 1039 North Farms Road. I think I just want to first say that for those of us concerned citizens who've been here fighting against this since day one, it's so incredibly alarming when you're asking questions this evening that we asked continuously along the way and answers are still not given. That's incredibly alarming. Mr. Puccini, I'm wondering if you could pull up the illness slide?
Yes.
Do you think that depicts the factual...
Don't, excuse me, don't address the questions to Mr. Puccini. Please address them to the commission if you would.
Okay. Well, what I want to say about this is, I mean, it's just about the most grossly misleading statement that can be up there. So many of us in this audience have done such extensive research on this topic because this is going to be dumped potentially in our backyards, and it's frightening. So I guess I want to know why the town of Wallingford chose to conduct a research through this scholarly journal database when we've given you so much factual evidence that contradicts that statement, which is an outrageous lie.
Let's, please, tone down the language.
It's the truth.
Well, yeah, it may be the truth, but to call it an outrageous lie, I think it...
It is an outrageous lie. I have documentation.
Ma'am, I don't...
That supports what I'm saying.
I don't want to get into a discussion with you about that, but I would ask you just to tone your language down. I don't know, Mr. Puccini, would you like to comment on that at all?
No, we found no direct link specifically linking data centers to human illnesses. No.
Okay. Perhaps the town of Wallingford's research should have started and ended with the documented testimony from the live, breathing human beings who are in continuous peril, who are actually already suffering in class action lawsuits and suffering tremendous consequences that these data centers have caused because reckless and irresponsible leaders ignored these people's cries for help. And the safeguards that were promised have turned out to be anything but safe. For instance, December 5th, 2021, Santa News, this was the headline, "Data Center Torture for Chandler Neighborhood Over Industry Sets Standards That Continually Fail Regardless That The Data Centers Are Operating In Compliance." I hope my neighbor Tony is here, and I hope he comes up and basically elaborates on this. You know, you tell me to keep my tone down. I have an existing condition, and a lot of these existing conditions, that's why this statement is so misleading, because existing conditions are straight across the board, well documented, to be severely affected by these data centers. It's nobody's business, but mine happens to be migraine headaches. There's several people in litigation because their migraine headaches have just gone haywire because this noise doesn't shut off. It's not, it's not a joke. So now we move to your minimum 500 to 750 feet setbacks. Getting back to that, am I going to be, I'm a fifth-generation resident. My childhood home and my grandparents' home is down the street from where I live. This neighborhood means a lot to me. The 500 and 750 feet setbacks. Do you have any scientific data that they will safeguard us?
Yes, they were recommended by the sound engineer, and he will be here next meeting to answer those questions.
Okay. But again, if you do the research, all of the safeguards have failed with all of these other data centers around the country who are supposedly operating in compliance.
If I could, and again, I don't mean to put Mr. Puccini on the spot, but I think some of the data centers, and we can, certainly the sound engineer, the acoustical engineer can address some of those issues that you have, but I think as pointed out in the slides that, I believe it was the Chandler Arizona, again, Mr. Puccini, you can correct me, but there were essentially very little in the way of regulations concerning setbacks, concerning sound, concerning noise. And I think some of the other situations that were found, if you're, you know, talking about, say, with, you know, with Chicago where there was a lot of complaints, that was a data center that was right in the center of Chicago amongst a smaller-sized building as far as its height, surrounded by, you know, other much taller buildings where the sound goes up. So, you know, I can appreciate the fact that in certain areas that they've, they're experiencing some problems and there, you know, perhaps hasn't been any enforcement of that. But in those areas, there was, I think, when they were approved, there was very little requirements as far as setback screenings or everything, you know, that were there. So I'm not necessarily think that you're comparing what's being proposed here to the regulations that were in place at the time when some of those data centers that you're talking about were approved. I'm not saying that your concerns are not valid concerns, but all I'm saying is that there, I think, is a difference in at least what's being proposed here to what was proposed or acted on in some of these other data centers that you're citing.
I understand that, but you also have to take into consideration that these are the largest double-story monstrosities, and they're essentially projected to be dumped in my backyard, and I'm not happy about that.
I understand that.
So I think a lot needs to be taken into consideration. I mean, I can guarantee that the study that he just told me, the sound engineer, as far as the setbacks, was that taken into consideration with people with pre-existing conditions?
I can't...
That it's already proven in court litigation across the country and throughout the world? I guarantee it's not. Move it back further than my, from my house, please.
Let's give the gentleman a chance to answer, please.
I can't speak for the sound engineer, so he will answer those questions when he is here.
Well, I'm going to assume that that's a no, so if he can have that information, that would be valuable to us. I just think that our health quality of life should not be challenged, altered, compromised, destroyed, especially in our own homes and backyards over business decisions by leaders in positions of power who are supposed to protect us. These leaders are either willful, and then I'm not really saying you, I'm talking more about the town council and even Wallingford Legal, who has yet to get back to me for my letters in June. It's just, all of our concerns have been willfully overlooked or recklessly ignored. And I think I'm speaking for a lot of my neighbors in saying that because we go round and round in circles, asking questions, and we never get an answer. And as far as the sound engineer, I just want to make a point because if I'm understanding it in layman's terms, in layman's terms, he's essentially saying, "It might be okay, hopefully it'll be okay during the day, but good luck at night." And again, we live in a very quiet, peaceful country setting. We fall asleep with our windows open, we hear tree frogs, owls, crickets, wake up to bird singing, sounds a very little house on the prairie, but that's the beauty of it. And we don't want that aesthetic destroyed. And as far as the volume being raised, you know, the volume is not just being raised at 50%. You're raising it and changing it drastically to the most obnoxious and irritating noise that comes from the heaviest of industry. I don't care if the birds sing louder, I care if generators are louder. Have any of you ever been sleeping late on a Sunday morning and you have a neighbor who has a diesel truck running? That's one diesel truck that can turn off or pull out of the driveway. Please understand the scope and the magnitude and the size of these buildings that have no business being around neighborhoods. You know, like I said, our reality, this is our reality, and it's going to be far more damaging than a 50% number that is thrown out as acceptable. Acceptable to whom? Is it acceptable to you if this was in your backyard? If you're used to peace and quiet, do you want to hear obnoxious industry behind you? Again, I grew, I grew up on North Farms Road when it was a single-lane dirt road. I can remember that, that far back. And I understand we have changed and everybody wants our town to do great, but at what expense? You know, everybody's talking about the property lines and the distances. The fact that, and again, I question the 500 and 700 feet because over the summer, we were told by Mr. Quinn and Mr. Len Fazano, "Oh, one football field will do it. One football field will do it." And then I asked, "What's the scientific proof behind that?" And they had none. So everything they'd been telling us was essentially manipulation. So I have to wonder now, are we being manipulated again, or is this going to be solidified that we're going to be protected? Because that's why we're stressed out, that's why we are angry, because when we ask questions and we don't get answers, who's protecting us? As far as the water issues, on May 17th, the City Council of Mesa, Arizona approved an $800 million development of an enormous data center. They quickly learned that keeping the rows of powerful computers inside one data center from overheating would require approximately 1.25 million gallons of water every day, a price that Mayor Jen Duff believes is way too high. She went on to say, "We are on high red alert," and I didn't, and I don't, excuse me, "we are on high red alert, and I think data centers are an irresponsible use of our water. What an absolute waste." Is it feasible for our town to supply these data centers with the amount of water they will require? And does anybody know how many millions of gallons of our water every single day per building Wallingford anticipates having to use?
Again, I, we don't have an application in front of us, but I think as Mr. Puccini had indicated, that the wet cooling is something that's, or the water cooling is done in, primarily in Arizona, in those areas, it would be more dry cooling that would be done here, wouldn't be the use of water. So I don't know if you'd like to expand upon that, Mr. Puccini, or not.
No, that's correct. I don't know the exact, everything about every single data center in the entire country, but from what I've read and what I've seen, I guess, certain companies like Google use water for cooling, and they're mostly out west for those climates. So the sound engineer was actually going to speak about that tonight, but, because he has more experience in that field.
Well, I don't mean to insult you, but if I was in your position and I had residents whose lives were in peril and quality of life was about to be drastically interrupted, I'd know everything about every data center in this country. But that's just me.
It's not possible.
As far as, so will any of the water issues affect our wells? My house in particular is protected under the Wallingford watershed, and I'm just wondering if we have anything to worry about as far as water issues? Do we need to worry about our wells drying up? Do we need to worry about...
Well, again, I think Mr. Puccini had indicated that the, I ask you this, Mr. Puccini, would it be possible to specify that these data centers or a data center would need to use dry cooling and couldn't use any water?
Certainly, that can be written in as well.
Well, I just think that we are very concerned because when you look at the amount of water that these...
I know, he's indicated that he felt that that could be, that that could be part of the regulation, so that's a concern. It appears that that concern could be addressed.
And I just want, hypothetically thinking, worst-case scenario, if these somehow get into our veins underneath in our wells, and our wells become depleted and dry out, and we essentially have to dig a new well, who's liable?
If what? Again, I'm not...
Well, we just, again, we do not receive the answers that we need. So I'm saying worst-case scenario, if any of our neighbors, if our wells are affected to the point of being...
Affected by what? By vibrations, by noise, or...
If they end up having to dig to supply themselves with more water?
I believe though, Mr. Puccini just indicated that it would be possible to put into the regulations, again, don't put words in my mouth, Mr. Puccini, that it could be that you could, our regulation could limit the cooling to dry cooling, is that correct?
Yes.
So if that, if that could, if that could be done, and if it's done, then there wouldn't be any, you know, digging to get water and deplete your wells.
And what if it can't?
Excuse me?
And what if it can't?
If what can't?
What if the system that you're speaking of, they determine because these buildings are so enormous?
Well, but if it's part of our regulations where they have to have a dry cooling, if they can't meet the dry cooling, they can't meet the regulation.
Okay. I think I understand what you're saying. And I keep hearing about GodSpace and the host agreement. Is it Tom Quinn of the Verdi Group, Tom Quinn of Ocean State?
Again, we're not talking about GodSpace in the host agreement here. What we're talking about...
Well, I'm just wondering if...
Excuse me, if I could finish, please. What we're talking about is a regulation for, to consider data centers in certain zones. That's what's being considered as far as, you know, an agreement that may or may not be out there, it's not the commission's purview.
No, I understand that, but we're just, you know, as residents, we're trying to really understand how fast this is coming. And I know that Mr. Quinn has not acquired a mass majority of the land yet behind me. And with that said, and that's why I was asking, is it Tom Quinn of Verdi Group, Tom Quinn of Ocean State Developers, Tom Quinn of GodSpace, Tom Quinn of NE Edge LLC? If he is operating under another company right now, does the host agreement get wiped out and do they have to reapply?
And I guess I would ask Attorney Small if you could perhaps answer that question?
Agreement is with GodSpace. If someone else wants it for a different piece of property, that would be a different agreement.
If GodSpace is not the company purchasing the land in this, when, because the...
Whoever is going, well, we have an agreement with GodSpace. GodSpace doesn't, that agreement doesn't talk about who's buying the land, but it does identify the properties that GodSpace would be able to use the host fee agreement for. So if that changes, that would affect that? If GodSpace looked to sign the agreement, that requires town consent?
I guess I'm just asking that if the, if he defaulted on the previous contract with the landowners and he's entering into a new contract with the landowners under a new company, would that mean he could still operate under that host agreement, or does he...
Possibly not. It would really, we'd have to take a look at the facts.
Mr. Puccini, if I was too hard on you, I apologize, and the same to the council. It's just very emotional to get up here as often as we do and not understand certain things and not have adequate information given back to us. I appreciate you just explaining that. I explain, I understand it a little better. So as far as, I just want to like really, I probably am going to sit down and have a million things pop in my head that I wish I said, but I just really... million things pop in my head that I wish I said, but I just really hope that this commission does their due diligence because we really were failed and underserved by the town council. So many of us begged and pleaded with them to not rush this and to put pause. And I know it got dumped in your lap, but we really and truly just had so many questions and so many people in the neighborhood didn't know about this. And we asked them to push pause. They rushed it through. And I just, it just popped in my mouth, in my head, as far as, as far as the location of these, why is it that the data centers are taking precedence over living, breathing human beings raising their families in our community, in these residential neighborhoods? Why can't the, for safety and well-being of us, why can't the, the data centers be limited in number? And why can't they be decreased if it means safeguarding the residents? Is that something that's possible, or it's, it's not possible?
It's entirely possible during the special permit process when we actually get an application.
And if, I, I guess I just have another question. In regards to me saying, "Why are they taking precedence over us?", why is it that they're 500 or 700 feet from our property line, hopefully at least the back property line? Why aren't they seeing they're these monstrosities that are just going to be so loud and obnoxious and emitting sound that nobody wants to hear? Why can't they be put more on top of each other in kind of a cluster? And especially seeing it sounds like there's not a lot of people that go there, probably because it's unhealthy to be around that sound on a daily basis. I would assume there's got to be some serious protective gear worn. But, but why is, why is that? Why is it that they can't be clustered together more?
Well, again, I guess, Mr. Puccini, you could answer that question, but I'm not sure if there's, there's a limitation as far as how close they can be to one another, provided, you know, they meet the various setbacks and what have you, so.
Yeah, that would be all discussed as part of the, an application. There is no application, so I can't speak on to, as to what would be in front of us.
Would the limit as far as the closeness with them and proximity to each other be something that would be a hazard to the public? Because if it's not a hazard to the public, I would certainly hope that living, breathing human beings raising their families in our community would take precedence over buildings.
Absolutely, I agree.
So maybe that's something. You know, like I said, we all want the town to succeed, but we don't want to spend the rest of our lives, you know? My husband and I have killed ourselves to create a beautiful home for our kids, you know? Hopefully our grandkids come back. This is the time where we're supposed to be enjoying life, getting to that point, enjoy the fruits of your labor, and then this comes into your purview, and it's horrible.
We understand that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And again, I believe there was a gentleman, yes, this gentleman right behind you, you'll be next, sir, and then you'll be next. Yes, you, sir.
My name is Ron Maturro, 1009 North Farms Road. I am a retired electrician. I work the nuclear power plants in Connecticut. I see what could happen here. Would I, I don't know, is this thing working or what?
Oh, yeah, we have you loud and clear, sir. You may want to just step back just maybe a, we'll see how that is.
Okay. Do you hear me?
I can, yes, sir.
All right. Anyways, talking about these data systems, what they are is computers. Well, back in the 60s, I worked with my brother-in-law, IBM, George Street, New Haven, and they have to keep those buildings cold because the computers generate so much heat, they have to keep the temperature down around 60. So that means you need air conditioners. And not only we're going to have the data systems making noise, we're going to have big air conditioners to bring the decibels of the sounds. So that's not a good idea. Also, I noticed Northeast Utilities is putting new power lines behind us across North Farms Road. Well, obviously, those power lines are coming from Millstone Unit 3. Well, guess where they're going to go? To your buildings. There's no way Wallingford is going to supply this electricity. They could never, never generate enough power. So it's going to come out of Millstone. And also, just for kicks and giggles, years ago, I had a fluorescent light bulb at night. I brought it underneath the power lines, and do you know it lit because of the phosphorus in the tube? So that means people and animals are getting charged up with this electricity, believe it or not, and that will affect our health. So it's not very good to have all this going on. So again, we're going to have a lot of noise with the units, we're going to have a lot of noise with the generators, I mean, the air conditioning units, because I've installed and repaired air conditioning central air in people's homes. They make a lot of noise, okay? So you got to add that to it, to the equation. So we have a big problem here, real big. As far as, what else did I want to? Wavelength bothers your, animals, mostly female women and animals, they hear a higher decibel than a male, so they'll get affected more. Of course, men, males are more on the basie side where females are on the higher side. Let's see, health issues, I did that. Something else I want to say, something about, is it true that these companies coming to Wallingford and they're going to get not taxed for 30 years? Is that a fact? Okay, and I don't know if that is true. Who can answer that one?
There is, I, sir, Attorney Small can answer, but I'll give you the Cliff Notes on it. It's my understanding that they are, they're not taxable for a, an agreement that was, or legislation that was done by the state for 30 years. However, depending upon, sir, you just, you can lower your chin a little bit, don't, don't be too surprised here now, that depending upon the size of the buildings, the number of megawatts, I believe the amount in annual, not taxes, but payment in lieu of taxes could approach on one building about a million dollars. But Attorney Small, if you'd like to perhaps give a little insight into that.
The, the state passed a law in order to entice data centers to Connecticut, basically saying if you commit a $200 million investment, they're not taxed. So that's by state law. They don't pay any taxes, except they do have to, in order to come to a town, they have to enter into a host fee agreement and make a payment to the town in order to come here. So that's what it's, it's a state law that did that.
Okay. Are they going to pay taxes to Wallingford? Does Wallingford get any taxes out of this?
They're making a payment instead of taxes, in lieu of taxes, because the state statute says they're not to be taxed.
No, say that again, please, I didn't understand.
The state law made them tax exempt. They don't pay any kind of tax.
I'm talking about the town.
I know, but that's part of the state law. However, the state set, law says that if they want to go into a certain town, they do have to enter into a agreement whereby they pay the town something. It's, well, it's a fee instead of, it's not technically a tax.
Okay. So, are, so are they going to pay? What I want to know is, is they can pay anything to Wallingford to help Wallingford in-
I, I think, again, sir, you've asked the question, and she's answered, and she's answered the question.
Okay.
Yes, they will be paying, and, sir, let me finish, please. They'll make a payment in lieu of taxes. That payment, I'm not sure if that, what that is under the host agreement, but at least from what I read in the paper, that depending upon the size of the building, that payment in lieu of taxes per year per building could be up to a million dollars. So they are paying, while it's not a tax, it's a payment in lieu of taxes which comes to Wallingford.
How does, well, Wallingford benefit money-wise?
Well, I, I would say that if a business has to pay in lieu of taxes a million dollars to Wallingford, Wallingford benefits by seeing a million dollars deposited into its town account.
A million dollars? Is this total?
Sir, I'm not going to get, we're not getting into the specific dollar amount, but what I'm, the point I'm, sir, the point I'm trying to make is, while they don't, is the Attorney Small indicated, while they don't pay taxes, they have to make a payment in lieu of taxes which is negotiated with the town.
Well, I think that far as residents, like me, the residential, we should pay less taxes with this people coming in to pay some of our share.
Well, sir, that's your opinion, and you're certainly entitled to it.
Well, somebody's making money here and it's not me. Thank you.
You're most welcome, welcome, sir, and I look forward to seeing you at next meeting. Yes, the young lady in front, please.
I'm the Rucker, you're getting your Mesa, 76 St. Wood Road. Good evening, everybody. Good evening to the commissioners, to the neighbors, to the members of the public.
Excuse me, if you could just slow down just a little bit, I'd appreciate that.
Oh, that was just introduction, so, yes, I just go through. And I also would like to commend Mr. Puccini and the team for their diligent work on this. We know this is unprecedented. No municipality, either in Connecticut, New England, or it seems in the whole country, ever attempted a project like this, so it's challenging by nature of its uniqueness. And we appreciate that difficulty. With this said, I would like to dwell a little bit on the setbacks. I think there is a fundamental misunderstanding of residents' concerns in regards to the setbacks. Any particular number doesn't concern us per se. It concerns us in terms how much of a mitigation can be achieved by ways of this number. If 500 feet was, 500 feet for the buildings, I guess, that's proposed in the new regulation, result in five decibel increase of the permanent background noise, that's what we're really looking at. The previous version of the regulation was calling for no significant impact, I believe. And so, again, interrupt me if this is, should be better addressed by the sound engineer, or at least this, the framework can be addressed by Mr. Puccini. But through you, Mr. Chairman, I would like to ask Mr. Puccini whether he can give us a clear example. Those five decibels, is it two times more? Is it 10 percent more? What is it in perceptible impact?
Sure, I, I think Mr. Puccini could perhaps give you an answer, but candidly, I think the sound engineer would probably be able to give you a much more definitive answer. So I, I think that would be much more appropriate to, to have the sound engineer rather than Mr. Puccini, and I think that-
So we'll save it for the next one, then?
Yes, I think that would be much more appropriate.
Okay. And so if a sound engineer is going to make an appearance at the next meeting, probably there is something can be done to save time. So in the, in the letter addressed to the corporate council dated January 5th, the sound engineer provided two models of how the impact of five decibels would be perceived audible in two certain kinds of neighborhoods. And my understanding is that the neighbor, because the daytime sound comes mostly from the traffic, the difference between neighborhoods and how much impact for how many hours a day will really be perceptible to those residents is dictated by the distance from major highways. I've noticed that both of those models take into consideration distances such as 900 feet or 1,500 feet from major highways. Our neighborhood is very different. We are 3,000 feet from 15, we're 4,000 feet from I-91. So our baselines are very different. We don't have daytime noise that will rise versus the back, background noise during the night. In this case, should it be useful, can it be asked by the commission for the sound engineer to prepare a similar model, but for actual neighborhood in IX? For example, take Tankwood and Midland, intersection of those two roads, see how far away they are from the freeway, and how much noise do they get during the day? Because I think the whole perception of a sound consultant, of the sound engineer hears is five decibels will be only audible for very few hours during the night, because during the day, you will get the traffic to cover it up, basically. It seems like, and Mr. Puccini can correct me if my perception is wrong.
Yeah, he was actually going to expand on that during the meeting, so I don't want to speak for him, but he did bring that up.
Okay, so perfectly, it probably will help us if he models the same for our particular type of neighborhood, because the neighborhood is on a different scale of quietness.
He just gave examples of available data that he had.
Just different distances from the freeways. Just say if it's a neighborhood that's four, five, 6,000 feet from, like for my house, it would be three and 4,000 feet from the highways, and 2,000 feet from North Farms, I'm not sure what's called, Town Artery, like what qualified? Or it's 68, which is 7,000 feet. My concern here is that, speaking about preserving the character of a neighborhood and compatibility with the neighborhood, our neighborhood is on a different scale of quietness. We are different type. And unfortunately, I think for that development to mitigate in our neighborhood is a challenge. And if it can be done, wonderful, perfect. If it can be done with a setback of 100 feet, it's fine as well. But it seems like, according to the engineer, we're still going to experience a very significant increase in noise. On logarithmic scale, it might be very significant. I, again, we'll wait for the engineer to expand on that. This is as far, and everything else probably should wait for the sound engineer to be here to save everybody's time. My other concern is, the commission is relying on the mechanism of special permit to safeguard the residents. In the meantime, the regulations already set a certain top off. It's going to be plus something. You got, you're not going to be guaranteed, and before it used to say, no substantial impact. So by putting that into regulation, commission already surrenders the discretion to require full mitigation. And referring to five research parkway application by Montante, not because it was denied, but because it's the most recent, the most relevant, where it's located, it's the same zone, it also bought a neighborhood very closely. So the circumstances are very similar, similar. And precedent from that application was that during the special permit, the applicant was basically compelled to achieve full mitigation in- was basically compelled to achieve full mitigation in sound, right? They came before the commission without the sound wall. They were allowed use, they were within the zone requirements. At the same time, they were compelled to suggest mitigation, offer mitigation, to go to complete mitigation, basically, through the wall. And on the traffic, unfortunately, full mitigation was not available, and the commission said no, didn't feel comfortable with allowing it. And I wonder why for data centers here, commission is inclined to waive that discretion, to require full mitigation. The developers, however much money Google has, they will not offer best mitigation available unless they are compelled. They won't spend extra money on that. And it seems here, commission already says, okay, it's gonna be worse. I wonder why.
But again, and again, Mr. Puccini, you could probably comment on this a little bit, but looking at that application that you're referring to, they were required to meet the sound requirements of the town, whatever that was for the particular zone, correct?
Yes.
They needed to, they need to mitigate to those requirements. That's what they needed to do. What's being proposed here, certainly if I understand it, and I think I do, you're taking the background noise and figuring, factoring out certain things, and then saying they can increase the five dBs. They can't go over what the sound requirements are for the various districts, correct? So I guess, a case in point, just as, let's say the background noise in this particular case was 30 dBs. They could go, and again, jump in here if I'm wrong.
35.
They can go to 35.
Yes.
In the zone, and I'm not sure what the requirement is for this particular zone, but I believe it's-
51.
Could it, excuse me?
51.
Yeah, so it's 51, so they can't go to 51. They're required, they would be set at that 35. Where, what you're referring to is, if, in that particular application, if it was, background was 30 dBs, they could go up to the 50 or the 55, whatever it might have been required in that zone. So when we say full mitigation, they had to show that they could not go over that, if it was 55 dBs for that particular zone. So that was-
For Montante, Chair?
Excuse me?
You mean for Montante?
I-
You mean for the five resource parkway application? Is that the one you're-
Yes, that's the one I think you're referring to.
Yes, but I think, in the end of the day, with the introduction of a sound wall, they showed that there will be no increase in either continuous or impulse sound at the nearby residential property.
They may have, I'm not sure if they did. I'm not, I'm not saying that you're not, not, not wrong, but I just-
If my recollection is correct, we listened to that.
You may very, your recollection may be better than mine, but-
I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry, please, continue.
So I think, my point here is that, why at the time of allowing that use in the zone, we're already compromising? We're already saying, we're gonna take a hit. In five to 10 years, when this thing is gonna be built, there might be technology available for complete mitigation. I wonder why the commission would surrender that discretion now and allow an increase? An increase seems to be large, but again, we will wait for the sound engineer to talk about it. I'm speaking about the principle.
Mm-hmm.
Commission has a discretion with a special permit. First of all, this use is not allowed. There is a permanent noise source that might be not compatible with residential, and if it is allowed, it needs to be safeguarded, right? When the zone was designed, obviously data centers were not there, the nuisance, the continuous nuisance that it represents to human beings was not, could not be anticipated. And so that zone was not designed with that use in mind, obviously. So now, Google comes, trillion-dollar company. It might cost them a few hundred million, 10 million dollars more to implement full mitigation. So why would the commission and the town of Wallingford surrender that right to require full mitigation? It came from no substantial impact, down to five decibels, which is, on logarithmic scale, is close to 50% increase in the noise. If 10 decibels is double, it's 50%. If the gas prices went up from $2 to $3, we would notice. If your work week increased from five days to seven and a half, you would notice. If your significant other grew overnight from six to nine feet, I don't think you would escape noticing that. So again, it's a layperson, Mr. Cohen suggested that sound engineer makes a demonstration for us, but just on a common sense level, to me, 50%, it is substantial. So I wonder why at this point already, commission surrenders its right, its discretion, to require full mitigation? And then we're all happy, we have a safeguard. I'm not looking for an answer. I'm just looking for something to probably be considered by the commission, and abusing everybody's patience. Just a very quick question, if I could, through you, Chair, to Attorney Small, as you hear, you mentioned that host agreement, I'm the girl who tortured you with the questions at 1:00 AM about what will apply, so it probably will be much easier if it's person-to-person. So you mentioned that the agreement specifically says that the strictest set of rules apply. Which article is it?
No, I said that nothing in our agreement prevents the Planning and Zoning Commission from being stricter in their requirements.
Okay, I must have misunderstood. Now, Attorney Small, in your opinion, for example, in that Article 27, that kind of dips the toes into the area of responsibility of a planning zoning commission, and deals with the building size, noise, setbacks and such. In that article, for example, the building was 45 feet tall, plus overhead structures are allowed. For example, developer, he makes it, he leaves another day, he comes with an application for a special permit, and requests, and requests a building of 45 square, I'm sorry, feet tall. That, he is entitled by the agreement. But the commission, under the discretion of special permit, says, uh-uh, neighboring building at two, anyways, only 30 feet. What would have prevalence?
They have to do it at 30 feet.
Perfect. Second question, the noise protocol. Also, in the agreement, in the same Article 27, there is a peril noise protocol, describing the same, establishing the background noise, having an expert bring a model. And when I asked the question about who is gonna be reviewing those models, and what would be the process, I asked, will it be P and Z? And you answered, it's gonna be administration, as represented by legal department, and not necessarily public hearing. And it seems to me, if I remember correctly, that there was like a whole Harold's protocol laid out here.
So when, when they're designing their project, they would have to first show the town that they meet whatever the agreement calls for. So they would, that would include looking at the sound from a contractual between the town and them. They then would come to planning and zoning and have to comply with whatever planning and zoning is requiring. I always assume, since I believe, and the expert will say, that the draft of the sound is tighter than the agreement is, that they would look to design to the more strict standard. I mean, it's to their advantage to do that.
What is the function of your review, Attorney Small? Are you approving?
No, we're gonna rely upon experts.
I understand, but you will be probably coordinating, because who is gonna be, whoever representing town in this process of preliminary review?
I would think it would be several departments, it may include engineering, I'm not, it may include engineering.
So those parties, whoever they are, what is their function? Are they approving? Are they just being informed?
We would be looking for hiring the expertise to tell us whether or not the design that's being proposed meet what we've agreed to. That's what we'd be doing.
Would you consider the standards, if it's, because it's an alternative set of requirements? In your review, will you be considering this set of requirements that P and Z is introducing?
I would think that we would say to the applicant, I'm not sure why they'd show us a design that didn't meet the stricter, the planning and zoning, they have to get passed through planning and zoning. It doesn't matter whether we agree with what they did or not, so they have to satisfy planning and zoning regulations. So I would expect, when they show their design to the town, that it complies with both.
Well, that would seem reasonable, just to me, it sounds like-
It'd be a waste of time for them to do it otherwise.
It's like a double process. I'm just trying to figure out what's the purpose of having separate departments reviewing the same application, and it seems like these standards are different from those standards, and whether, from my perspective, the concern is whether that will create a loophole for any applicant to claim that they're compliant with certain set, and then that one-
They cannot do that. They cannot do that. Planning and zoning has planning and zoning authority, they cannot do that. The whole purpose of putting that provision in the host agreement was to give us a contractual basis to say they didn't do something properly, and then they've got a $200 million investment at risk because they violated a contract. It was thought to be an extra protection, it was thought to have the discussion regarding how they were going to protect the sound to be at the earliest possible stage, which the commission can't do. They're gonna get a plan from the application, they're gonna come see us before that. So when they do, we're gonna have the zoning regs in front of them, they're gonna have them themselves. I mean, it makes no sense for them to create a plan that doesn't comply with this body's rules, which are gonna be stricter.
That certainly sounds like that. Would it, in your mind, Attorney Small, would it benefit host agreements just to reference compliance with planning and zoning regulations as they stand, or will be adopted at the time blah, blah, blah is required as a term of this agreement? Will that be simpler?
So the agreement does say that nothing in that agreement prohibits the Planning and Zoning Commission to have more restrictive provisions.
Setbacks, though. I read it as specifically addressing the-
We don't need, we don't need an agreement to tell us, tell them that they have to comply with planning and zoning. We don't need that. That's, that's the law.
No, my concern is just because the agreement is in place, and planning and zoning in a place, the contradiction, if it's not clearly, if nothing clearly says what takes legal precedence, and I, I agree, on the setbacks, it's very clear that any other department can set.
That contract cannot legally trump a regulation adopted by the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you, very comforting. Then no further, and I'll save my long list for the sound engineer. Thank you, everybody, for your attention.
Thank you. Other commission, excuse me, other members of the public would like to speak on the application. Yes, this woman back here. Other, while she's coming up to the front, may I have a show of hands of other people that would like to speak? Okay, we'll continue with the individuals in the back, move toward the front, then we'll go to the right side.
I'm Deborah Delo, 22 Tankwood Road. We're a newbie. We moved in in August. We took a house that sat there for quite a few years, and we're revamping it and trying to help our neighbor's property value. I'd like to, first of all, thank you, because this has been a very interesting process, and you letting us talk. I'm gonna keep this a little bit shorter, and cutting out a lot of my stuff, because Danielle hit on a lot of my points. One of them being, why don't we just knock out having these data centers come? I mean, no matter what I've read, no matter what I've seen, they're a headache, they're noisy, they're just not compliant to the kind of neighborhood that we have. The other thing, too, is with the changes of technology so fast, how long do we think we're going to need data centers? We may be going through all this stuff and money, because, I mean, all your research and all your work you're doing, they could be completely outdated by the time they even get this thing built. I always go back to eight-tracks. We thought that was like the coolest thing. Well, how long did they last? And look at how far we've come. So that's another thing that kind of upsets me. Maybe in 20 years, with the tax exempt, we may not even need them. We may be building these things and having empty buildings just sitting there. That would be a shame. Do we have a plan for the wildlife that will be displaced? The hall, and I know, this is probably like a tree hugger type thing, but I have to bring this up, because since we have lived there, the amount of wildlife is unbelievable. Now, we came from Northford, we butted up against a water company property. We never saw the wildlife that we see living across the street from us now. We have the bald eagles, we have families of them. Who do we make sure, or whose responsibility is to make sure that the Connecticut General State Stat is Section 26 to 93 for their protection is followed? I mean, how does that fall in? We have the hawks. The hawks are on a comeback. Without the hawks, who eat snakes, rats, mice, and other nuisance, they'll start overrunning our neighborhood. At first, I thought this was kind of comical when I was reading it, but then I really found out that this is quite a problem. There's about 175 acres of land that houses many species of birds, lots of rabbits, a very large herd of deer, and as Danielle said, where do we move the coyote populations? I mean, are we loading them up and like spreading them out in Wallingford? These are things that I think that we have to also address, because now, are we gonna have to put money off to the side for more animal control? So as I look at it, you have your million dollars a year that they're going to be paying the town, but then I sit there and I say, okay, we gotta deduct for this, we gotta deduct for this, we gotta deduct for that. I also have to, somebody else already asked this, so I'll skip this over. If we decide to move forward, what are we gaining? What is our neighborhood going to gain? The connecticutmayor.org, dated 9/12/2021, said that besides the loss of sale and property taxes, we're getting a million dollars a year, but take away everything else, what are we getting? They only have 20 to 30 permanent employees, and I did, you know, re-imp on that. The amount of power usage, the loss of our property value, the loss of wildlife, and the loss of quality of life. I think we're all in agreement that something is going to go on that property. I can accept that, I think we can all accept that, knowing that, you know, they can do whatever they want to do with the property. I honestly and truly, within my heart, cannot accept a data center. I don't think it's fair for any of us to listen to that noise 24/7. I don't think it's fair for any of us with all the unknowns. We don't know what's gonna happen to us, unless you're gonna take that million dollars and put it off to the side, so that if my husband and I do start showing signs of issues from, you know, health issues, are you gonna pay me for my medical bills? Are you gonna, you know, pay me, pay us for the losses that we're going to have? I mean, I'm gonna be honest with you, we bought this house also with the thought of, well, if one of us have to go to a nursing home or something, there's our money. Well, guess what? You guys are knocking my money right down to almost nothing. And that's not fair as a resident. And that's not fair as a resident to Wallingford. I do, you know, want to thank you again. I do have one, though, suggestion for you, sir. I'm sorry, Mr.?
Puccini.
Puccini. Could you redo your slides with a little darker background? Because we couldn't read anything that was on them. They were great slides, but you, you just need to-
Okay.
Yeah, it's a teacher that came out from me. Sorry. But other than that, I mean, I've been impressed with how you are handling this. I think everybody, you've let me meet all of our neighbors, so that I thank you. But more than anything, let's just get rid of the thought of a data center. Let's go back to the drawing board and coming up with something else that is not going to put the town of Wallingford in a position which I really feel that you're going to be putting yourself in. Thank you.
Sure. If I could just suggest, if you'd like to take a copy of the slides, they're right on that table.
Oh, I- And I'm not picking on you by any means, just so you couldn't see, they were a little bit too light.
Good enough. Thank you. And the gentleman in the back? And then the young lady next to him would be next, and then we'll move forward.
Hi, Nick Watrous, 183 Pinehurst Drive. Couple of things. First off, thank you very much for your, it just, I think it reflects to the residents in the area just that you've asked a lot of the questions that we've been asking since this was first introduced. It shows that you care and concerned about the livelihood of those who are in the area and who are potentially the most affected. So we appreciate that because that in itself speaks, you know, volumes to me. I do have some questions, and I'm sorry if some of them have already been addressed. One was, I know that a lot of attention's been brought to the sound, but then also, if there is an issue with vibration, are those issues also brought to the police? I know it was mentioned that if there was a noise issue, it would be handled through the police, through a noise ordinance. Is the same true for vibration issues?
My understanding would be that it would be. And again, I don't know, Mr. Puccini, I think you can confirm that, can you, or?
I'm guessing anything to do with, yeah, vibration or sound would be enforced by the police. I don't know the exact equipment you would need, but I'm guessing that, you know, if it's causing vibration levels that people are complaining about, we can maybe force the applicant or business owner to do a study and see if that's actually happening or not. So I don't have a, I don't have anything to go off of on this, but that's what I'm, uh, would guess would happen.
Okay. And then to piggyback off of some of the comments from Mr. Fitzsimmons earlier and as well as Mr. Hein, one of the concerns I have, too, is just how it's going to be enforced. If there's all these regulations that have to be met, is there now or is there the intention to have in the documentation first that the occupants are the ones paying for the tests to be done in terms of making sure that all the requirements are met? And then also, if, well, let's start with that. Is that something that's already being looked at? And if so, then are there plans to have specifics in terms of protocol for if they're not meeting it, exactly what is the next step? To make sure that all the, in terms of even timeline, do they have a certain amount of time by which those changes or whatever is not being satisfied does get satisfied by?
I guess if you're, you know, I'll let Mr. Puccini answer after I do, but I think the, if there, if there was an application, the application was approved. In order to gain a certificate of occupancy, in order to be able to operate, they would have to, at the discretion of the commission, because again, that's a special permit, the commission could require that they go out and perform the testing on the, on the, on the operation of the, of the building at its maximum capacity. They would have to demonstrate that they have met what they said that the, how the, how the business was going to operate. So they would have to do that prior to gaining a certificate of occupancy and being, and be able to operate on a full-time basis.
I guess my question is more regarding to the future. Let's say they meet all the initial requirements and everything looks good, but, you know, I had an '86 Skyhawk that didn't keep up with the noise that I would have liked. So I understand that over time, things break down and things might need to be changed, but I'm just wondering if there will be guidelines that, within a certain timeframe, if there is something that, on some of the HVAC equipment or whatever, that causes more noise than was originally-
Well, again, yeah, I think it's what is explained by, I think, Mr. Puccini and perhaps also Attorney Small, that once it, once it meets its, the initial requirements, they get their certificate of occupancy, if there are then complaints that come as far as the amount of noise, then that would be investigated initially by, you know, our, our police department and to see if, in fact, they're violating that or not. And depending on what comes of that, there is a, other actions that could be and hopefully would be taken by the town.
Okay. And then one other point was, I know Mr. Fitzsimmons had talked about not wanting to wordsmith, but that's kind of my jam. I like wordsmithing. So I know that one of the things that was mentioned was neighboring areas and neighboring, the neighborhood, basically. I, I think that it is important to have some sort of specific, you know, residential areas within a half mile, quarter mile, whatever would seem reasonable, because anybody who's right up against that property is going to be complaining if it's going as far as a quarter mile or a half mile. So I think that that would eliminate some of the vagueness and ambiguity that I think is concerning to some of the folks, too. The more specific we can be, the more, I think, the more enforceable things are and also the more comfortable it'll make everybody feel.
Okay.
So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Yes, and now the young lady in the back.
Kelly Watrous, 183 Pinehurst Drive. Thank you. I promise I'll be short. I was just curious, in the proposed guidelines, it mentions a sound and vibration impact analysis, but then it mentions everything about sound and nothing about vibration. And I was just curious how vibration is measured? And I know, you know, that might be a question for the sound engineer.
Well, we'll give Mr. Puccini a shot at that initially and then follow up with the sound engineer.
Well, it does mention, determines jurisdictional limits for noise and vibration and proposes noise and vibration control concepts. So as far as how it's measured, I can't speak to that, but we do mention it, and he has mentioned that it does get put into a study.
Okay. Because I had seen that it said that there shouldn't be any vibration that's perceived. They'll- I was just also curious, if there is then a vibration, is there equipment that the police would have? I know you had said that there's equipment that they would use to detect sound, but is there equipment that they would use to detect vibration as well?
I don't know. I'd have to ask them.
We'll follow, we'll follow that question.
Follow that up.
Thank you. And this is something, you know, very minimal, but I did notice in the host agreement that they did mention something about light pollution, and there's not anything in the guidelines that mentions light pollution. And I was wondering if that was anything that anybody had thought of putting in something about any kind of light pollution.
Well, we have regulations, light regulations that restrict, that, that, that deal with lighting of all facilities. So that's part of our general zoning regulations, if you would.
Perfect. Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. And we'll go to the gentleman up front.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to circle back here. I know everybody's talking about a particular project, but I'm concerned with small data centers. If you go on the internet and type in data centers in Wallingford, one of the headlines is 30 best data centers in Wallingford, Connecticut. We have a data center over in Barnes Park. It's fairly large. It has the generators, it has the cooling system, and it's, it's not what we're talking about here or what everybody's talking about on North Farms Road, but it's there, it's existing. And what happens to these projects that come in, you know, they're good-sized projects? Will they have to meet all of these regulations? Even if they're, you know, small, if somebody wants to invest a million dollars in a small data center, are they going to have to meet all of these regulations?
Mr. Puccini, if you'd like to answer that, please.
This is, yeah, this was brought up before, but I believe, yes, that would be the case. We couldn't define an actual, you know, limit as far as what would be, what would be in terms of considering one smaller than another. We asked the sound engineer, and he had no advice as to how to separate the two. But we don't, we didn't believe that, you know, there would be a huge demand for, for smaller data centers. If they are part of, say, an office, it would be more of an office use. These are, these are a certain threshold that, you know, have accessory electrical substations with them. So, because, yeah, like, as he mentioned, there are smaller facilities, but they're considered as an office use.
I'm going to say they wouldn't be considered a data center because then they wouldn't be allowed.
Correct, yeah. Full, yeah, full, these are referring to the large, full-fledged ones that, with accessory electrical substations. So he is correct, so we have discussed that, but we didn't have a, a firm threshold as to how to define that, but.
I know we have one property owner in Barnes Park that's looking to expand 20,000 square feet strictly for data center. Now, they're not surrounded by residential at all, but they're there, and I, I think it would be cumbersome for them to, to have to apply, to follow all these. It just doesn't make sense. Actually, we could lose. You know, I mean, and I, I know you guys have a real tough job accommodating everybody, but the whole circle here, all night and for the last few months, has been around this one big project. And, and that's not what the regs say. They say data centers. Like I say, you go on the internet, it tells you the 30 best data centers in, in Wallingford. I don't have an answer.
At this point in time, I don't have an answer either, but-
If I could, I could also answer to weed out accessory uses. We defined a data center as a principal use, so it would have to be the principal use of the property.
That might help, but you're going to have to define it somehow.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I think that, correct, if that takes care of everybody in the center and on the left, so now we'll go to the right. And let's start from gentleman in the back, and then we'll move forward. Excuse me, ma'am, would you like to, is there anyone behind the gentleman who has his arm brought? Okay, we'll take, ma'am, we'll take you first, and then we'll move forward.
My name is Kathy Palmer, 18 Tankwood Road, or at least I think it is. I'm really tired. I know you guys are. I want to thank you for your patience and listening to all of us. We've had a lot to say. Some of it's redundant, but, you know, we're going to have to live with this, so that's why. I know this sounds like a typical not-in-my-neighborhood kind of complaint, but really, we don't want this in anybody's neighborhood. That's really the God's honest truth. This thing is going to be in the middle of a neighborhood. There's really no getting around that. I know you do appreciate that, and you're going to put safeguards in, but we have to live with those safeguards and the implementation of them. So I, I know you get that, but that's why we keep going round and round. So I have a few random concerns. I had a statement which turned into this train wreck now that we had this whole evening, and, you know, so bear with me, I'm going to try and compose myself. One of my big concerns is that this is a big plot that God's base is looking into. There's setbacks in place of this special permit process, but obviously with a big plot of land, you know, when you do planning and zoning, you want that business to be successful. That makes the town successful. Their success might mean expansion. So while they're planning on X amount of buildings now, I'm pretty sure they're going to plan on more buildings in the future. So how does that process play out if there is future expansion to, you know, the setbacks are at this point now, but now they want to put more buildings up? Now what happens to the setbacks? Is that, I assume that's a new application, a new special permit? And then the, the town is able to be notified so we can partake in the process, right?
Sure. For each, for each building that they would propose, or for each application, I mean, an application could have multiple buildings, but for each, you know, application, they need to meet the, need to meet the regulations. So that's, so that's reviewed. If someone, and forgetting about God's base, but just anyone else-
Right.
If they have a, a large piece of property, and they come in and they want to put one building on that property, they come in with an application. Then if they come back and say, you know, we'd like to put another building on that property in a certain area, they would have to come back and show that they meet the, all of the-
It's a whole new process?
Yes, it's, it's, yes, because it would be a, it's a, it's a new building. If they, again, if they came in and they had a proposal with three buildings, then that would be, that would be acted on for all three buildings because it would be one application. But again, if it's a single application for one building, it's completed, they want to come in for another building or another two buildings, they'd have to file the application, and they would have to comply with the various zoning regulations.
If they were to do another application, that's done by like a public notice type of thing?
Yeah. It would be in this particular case, because this is a special permit, so any application would be under the special permit, which would be then, you know, a public hearing on that.
Understand my apprehension because the money that the town makes is incumbent upon the number of buildings in the wattage. So it's hard for me to feel reassured that there's going to be, you know, a slowdown of expansion because town money is at stake. So, you know, so anyway. So one of the other things, the application for the generator use, it says that they have to indicate when they plan on firing them, days, whatever, but it doesn't really specify that we are able to put parameters around that. So they could say, we're going to do it on Tuesdays at noon every week. Okay, fine. Do we have the opportunity to say, no, that's not okay? Or is it just the application, they, they just give the information and we accept it as is?
Well, again, I don't want to ask for, answer for Mr. Puccini, but I believe there would be, because it's a special permit, there are-
There's a give and take.
Yeah. Yeah, there, there's, there's discussion on that.
All right. I didn't want to assume on that.
I, I do just want to mention, as we mentioned before, I'm probably being redundant, but under a special permit, the commission has a, a great deal of latitude, if you would.
More so than usual. I know well water has been talked about in terms of them not using water to cool, but I know nothing about nothing, but a little bit about a lot of things. I've had well water all my life, so them doing construction in close proximity to my home, water tables are connected, what if that impairs my water source? You know, I, I don't know, but I know how wells work, and it's all underground, all connected, and, you know, a big foundation goes in, you know, 500 feet away, and that's part of my water table. And now I don't have water pressure. What's my recourse if that happens?
Would you like to comment on that, Mr. Puccini, or?
Certainly a concern that can be brought up during the special permit process, during the application. For most other applications, you know, if there are concerns regarding water quality, they're brought up during the review process.
I mean, I know, because, you know, wells are expensive. It's expensive to drill. It's expensive to maintain. I don't want to go there. The setbacks, as they're defined, I think we have to actually cover that. The visual screening, I know there's a lot of different things talked about. I'm kind of concerned there's going to be a wall of unknown origin right at the perimeter of the property. Is that a possibility, the way things are worded?
No, it was meant to be around the buildings, the way it's written.
Okay. So not necessarily perimeter of property-
No.
Around the buildings.
Yes.
The sound monitoring, I'm hoping, I know a lot of people are worried about that, the sound and the vibration, the constancy of it. And the monitoring of it seems a little bit vague, and I think everybody's concerned about that. It would be nice if it were scheduled, maybe twice a year, every year, they pay for it, whatever. And I say twice a year because I know when I go outside in the summer and it's humid, I hear things way down the center of town, but in the winter, I don't hear anything. So it seems, I don't know, maybe a good idea to do it at two different times of the year because weather impacts how you hear things. I think that might be kind of nice to incorporate. About the neighboring and abudding being- About the neighboring and abutting being, you know, infringed upon, I think it would be good if we didn't say something like a budding, because, you know, we've got the properties that are right next to it, and then there's properties right across the street that aren't abutting, that could be impacted. And honestly, if somebody had a complaint a mile away, you've got a bigger problem. So you might wanna know about that? I don't think, I hope not, but...
I would think if there's a complaint a mile away, people that are a quarter of a mile away would be the first ones, but...
They will be knocking on your doors, that's for sure, it would be a big, big problem.
I've got a doorbell.
Enforcement of sound issues, I, I think everybody kinda covered that. That's kind of like the, the police take care of that if it's in, so like, if, you know...
That's, that's, that's the fir, that's the first step.
Yeah, so like, if there was an issue, and it's not during the monitoring time or whatever, and suddenly I'm noticing stuff, you know, I would call the police department?
You could call the police department, you could file a complaint, a complaint with the zoning enforcement officer.
And I think another good reason to monitor on a regular basis, every six months, every year, or whatever, you know, I, I know that they'll update equipment like on a scheduled basis, but nothing says that they have to. Equipment breaks down, bolts come loose, makes noise. I just think that would be a good idea. All right, I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the gentleman in the back with the red sweater, red shirt.
Good evening, Commissioner, good evening, members. Bruce Swark, 1043 Northrop Road. I'm gonna go on a tangent. I have a lot of things that are bothering me, a lot that I don't understand. First off, Mr. Hein and Mr. Allison brought up the point about the noise level. There should be a baseline noise level developed now, not waiting for someone. It needs to be developed now. Because if we don't have something now at the different times of the years, like some of the people have mentioned, we're gonna count on someone, we're gonna pay, we're gonna contract for, we're gonna give money to, to all of a sudden say it's okay. And then when the data centers are being built, it's gonna be, geez, it doesn't work. I don't wanna hear about the noise, and the police, and the having to come out to inspect it. I live on Northrop Road, and I'm gonna tell you a story, 'cause I'm gonna go off on it. This year, every weekend during the summer, all day Saturday, the electric division was on Northrop Road putting in new poles. The second weekend, I went out there, and I said, "Why are you guys here on Saturday putting in poles?" Because of the traffic. Yet my wife runs her daycare on Northrop Road, and we have to tell the parents to turn around in the driveway, we have to put signs out for all the trucks on the road. When I called the mayor and spoke with him, and I called the police chief and spoke with him about coming up, guess what I got? No one. No one came to my house. So when someone gets killed on Northrop Road, and I tell you I told you so, I will sue this town. Because I am tired of everybody saying to me, "It's okay, we already figured it in, planning and zoning passed it." I mean no harm to any of you gentlemen, no harm to anybody here. There's rights and there's wrongs, just like the baseline for the noise. We need to establish it now. We need to establish it at different periods of the year, when the air is dry and when the air is moist. Go to an airport. I don't know why we have to go to Virginia to find a noise consultant. Go to Bradley Airport. You wanna talk about noise payment? I spent 32 years at the airport. Airplanes can only take off and land at certain times. They can't land 24/7. They can't do that anywhere in the country. Certain times of the day, they have to use certain runways. In Boston, they can only land over the water. In JFK, they can only take off and land over the water. It's because of the rules that you people put in, the planning and zoning people at the airports there. The reverberation, the young lady was talking about the vibration, the vibration of the five decibels, what is that gonna cause us? It's gonna cause some of our houses internally to shake. And the neighboring neighborhoods, it's not adjacent, it's not neighboring. If you have a corridor of open area, that noise travels, just like that woman just said. The noise travels clear across town. She mentioned how she can hear it downtown. I hear the train when it comes to Wallingford every day, and I live in North Farms. It's just because there's a corridor of land that travels right up 68 and carries it right up. All those things, you gentlemen have the opportunity to say, "No. We put in all that money for Bristol Myers. We're there, they're gone." These data centers, you know what they're storing right now? What we call the cloud. It's not gonna be here in five years, we're all gonna have it on a stick on our phone. We're not gonna need it. So now we're putting out all this promised money. I'm gonna tell you the same thing I told the mayor. Numbers people are the best liars in the world, 'cause they can make any number work. I pleaded with him to please come to my home and sit in my driveway from 7:00 AM until 8:30 and try to pull out. I called the police and asked them to put the radar cart. I get it maybe once every other year. Until there's a death, nobody's gonna do anything. With the noise, you're only asking for more trouble. Once the environmental impact, the warming of the environment alone is gonna be damaging to ourselves and our wildlife. Man from open space. We all enjoy the beauty of it still. We knew there was gonna be economic development years ago, when all of our farmland was put under and passed through IX, it was for one business, one. How many are there now? Too many. There are way too many things that we're counting on money. I bet you no one in the town knows that the electric division spent the entire summer on Northrop Road on Saturday on overtime, three full crews, to put up new power lines and new poles. Do you know who we did that for? We did it for Meriden. Did Meriden pay for it? Who knows? It's more money that we're promised that we don't see. We're gonna get all these specialists to come in, and someone brought it up here tonight. Who does the specialist work for? Is he working for us, the town? Is he working for the business? Or is he working for the developer? One and one has to make two. We have the option to decide now what we want in our town, for the better of our town. Everybody talks about five, five DPA. Everybody here run their lawnmower? Run your lawnmower without your headset on? That's what equivalents do. Or if you wanna hear the vibration, put your engine down by the exhaust, and let it stay there for five minutes, tell me you don't have a headache after. It's all the same. We all wear hearing protection now. It's a forced thing that we have to do. Police officers, when they go to the shooting range, they don't shoot with their ears open. They have their fire range, they have their hearing protection on, because of the noise level. That air gets reverberated, it is gonna change the entire impact of the entire North Farms area. Dry cooling, they're gonna tell Mr. Puccini, "Oh, we can put the generators on the roof." What happens to the air pollution? What happens to the air noise that it's gonna create? It's gonna be full circle. We're not even touching the corner of the iceberg, or the first piece pie out of the circle with this. We, we are headed in a bad place for the entire area, as well as some of the articles that were brought up already tonight, about people that are suffering physical and mental ailments from this. It's only gonna continue. It's only gonna continue. Now, do we wanna have that black heel mark on Wallingford, or an assumed million dollars a building, or a promissory? What are you gonna do in two years when I say, "Sorry, we don't need iCloud anymore, it's not needed, we're closing the buildings"? Then we have all this beautiful property that we have, now with buildings that are developed, with who's gonna be in them? Or who's gonna pay for that first horse that's killed on North Farms Road or North Road, because one of those construction operators just happened not to look and ran over one of the kids in front of my wife's daycare? Oh, we're sorry. He's not from the state, he's from Virginia where they were from. I have some serious concerns as a resident, and it hurts. Our family has lived on North Road, I think it's 97 years this year. I think the Wall family has been here just over 100, and I think the Sella family has been there 80-plus. It's not fair to us to continue with all the generations of people having to fight this fight when we have you to protect us. We've been here for, what, three hours now? What did we accomplish? Thank you. What did we really accomplish? Poor Mr. Puccini's, working his butt off as a newbie here. It's continual. I said to the mayor, "Are we gonna keep paying this money out to have people move out?" We gotta realize that we are just too geographically tight here. We have a very limited open space left. Now you're gonna take it away. We're gonna take away another piece of it. We're gonna take away another piece of it. We don't want farms anymore in Wallingford. Who's brought idea was that? Who said we don't want open land? Who said we don't want farmland? Who said that I shouldn't be able to enjoy after living on the same property for 53 years, that I can't stay there for 20 more and enjoy my life? That's what you're saying to me? You wanna take and develop all the houses around us, so everyone's 20 feet apart? Please do it, but do it for all of us. Don't just do it to some of us. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else who would like to speak on the application? Sure. After this, young lady, anyone else?
So I guess you saved me for last. I'm Diane Swark, it's very nice to see you again. I live on 150 High Hill Road, and also my family lives on 1017 Northrop Road. I've listened to everybody here and certainly echo all their concerns. There is no reason to repeat it all. However, I have to say, this does remind me of the time when we fought the auto auction. The issues are very much the same. Mr. Fitzsimmons, you talked about monitoring, very important. High level of critical thinking, lights, electricity, water contamination, traffic, noise, the issues are the same. That was voted down for all the right reasons. It was voted down because it did not fit to the, to the character of the neighborhood. This is the same exact project. It really doesn't fit the character of the neighborhood. As I recall, I think coming was a form of torture in World War II to war prisoners. From what I've read, there's a town in Connecticut, Basra, that had the same kind of plan in front of its planning and zoning, and they voted it down for all the unanswered questions. I think the elephant in the room here is the fact that there are all unanswered questions. Granted, we don't have a plan in front of us yet, but this is exactly how the auto auction went. The more we talked, the more the applicant changed their application. The more we presented, the more they came back with answers. I am very concerned, because it does not fit in the char, within the character of the town. We shouldn't be known as a town with a big data center. As my cousin stated, Wallingford can do better. I don't think I want this in my backyard, granted, I don't live as close as my sister does, or my cousin, to this land, but I think it would definitely affect the character of the neighborhood. We all have water, the watershed, for all the right reasons, it's the wrong plan. Please think hard and long about this. I respect what you have to do. You have a lot on your plate. You have to do all of your critical thinking. You have to consider the residents, the taxpayers. I am a taxpayer of two properties in this town. I am very concerned about what's going on in this town. We expect people to do the right things. Yes, you've listened for three hours, I've sat here for three hours, and I really think that many valid points are brought forward. But I can tell you, in healthcare, if there's no control, you stop, and it's not a safe project. We can't control this once it's in. Once it's built, the damage is done. You can't do anything about it. And you're not gonna stand there and say, "Oh, I'll bring the police over, or I'll bring this other control agency over." They are going to do what they want to do, and you won't be able to control it. And that's the biggest concern right here. And they'll wanna expand, and they'll wanna do all the things that they promised they wouldn't do. This is big money, but it's the wrong project for Wallingford. Thank you.
Thank you. I guess with that, we've given every member of the public who wanted to speak an opportunity to speak, so if this, sir, we've given you the, the opportunity to speak. Certainly, as I mentioned, we're going to continue this until, you know, next month. You'll have an opportunity to bring up additional concerns or have additional questions that you have. I mean, we've, I think most people would agree, we've, you know, we've spent over three hours on this, and certainly have given everybody to have at least one bite at the apple. So with this, I guess I would bring it back to the commission. As I mentioned, we are obviously not going to vote on this application this evening, so at this point in time, we normally have a motion to continue this to a specific date, but as I've indicated to some of the commission members, the sound engineer had indicated that the 14th of February, which is our scheduled meeting for February, he is not going to be available. So we were discussing having a special meeting in the early part of February. I'm not sure at this point in time if we're in a position to come up with a specific date for commission members. And also, if I could direct my, just attention, question rather, to Attorney Small. Is the sound engineer given any dates that he may be available in, in, in February?
He hadn't by the close of the day, so I'll check tomorrow. Hopefully, we'll have some dates tomorrow.
Okay, so as far as now, we're gonna continue this, would we need to continue with, oh, don't run away from the microphone. Would we need to, from a legal standpoint, would, would we have to give a specific date that we're continuing this to, or...
Yeah, you're continuing it to a special meeting, and you'll post it as to what the date's gonna be.
So that's what we would need a motion for, then? Is that correct?
Well, it's, you've not closed, I mean, the, the public hearing is still open until you close it, so...
Yeah, nor, normally what we do is, maybe I'm just being a little bit too technical. We don't need, we're, we're continuing the public hearing, we don't need to give a specific date today that we're continuing the public hearing to. I guess that was my roundabout way of asking the question.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think you have to...
Give a specific date.
You don't have to say it's staying open, you don't have to specify. It would normally be to your next meeting, but we'll look to schedule a special meeting.
That being said, I'm sure there's one or two commission members that understood that, and if they'd like to make a motion, I'd appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we continue the zoning tax amendment hearing regarding data centers by special permit for IX and I-5 at a meeting to be determined for next month.
Good, we have a second?
Mr. Chairman, before we do this motion, can, can I just make a couple of comments on...
Absolutely.
On the, you know, comments, I, you know, we, you know, the residents brought up some issues, and one of the issues that I had from the beginning, we didn't get into real specifics, but I just wanna make sure when the sound engineer comes in, vibration and hum is, is really a key factor that, you know, we don't have any quantitative, quantitative measurements for that. And I just wanna make sure that, you know, he, he comes up with some type of measurements that, you know, we can chew on, I guess. And, you know, folks mentioned how to, how to measure that. And I think that is a key factor. Did not bring that up at the beginning, 'cause didn't know how specific we were gonna get. And I, and I just wanna make, you know, one comment on the revised regulations, because, you know, Ms. Mays brought up a really good point that, you know, I was concerned about as well, and she, she brought it up. And it's basically, you know, she's absolutely right that we've, we've kinda, with these revised regulations, we've kinda given some of our authority away as far as, you know, how we handle a special permit. So I, I just wanna, you know, it's, it's actually paragraph 5A from the revised October 12th memo to, you know, the current one, revised January 4th. And basically, about the wording not substantially raised, and now it's, you know, allowing for that five-decibel increase. So I, I just, you know, wanna bring that up to, you know, our attention. I, I think that's worth looking at. And, you know, by the time we have our meeting with the sound engineer, I think we'll have, you know, a little time to, to mull that over. So with that, I'll, I'll second the motion to continue.
We have a second on the mo- We have a second on the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
I sustain any objections. Okay, this will be continued to another meeting. It will be sometime, I think, in February. Certainly, that will be posted, and everyone will be made aware of that. And again, I appreciate the public for coming out, expressing their concerns. Hopefully, people realize that, you know, it does not fall on the deaf ears of the commission. Whether or not you agree or don't disagree with us, I mean, keep in mind that certainly the commission does listen to all of the public and takes to heart the comments that they've made. With that, Mr. Pacini, we're going to turn the meeting over to you to continue with bond releases and reductions.
Thank you. So... Is this on? Hello? Can you hear me? Number two, Tractor Supply is not going to be released. There are still some landscaping issues on that property, and I have written a letter and addressed those to the applicant. Bond release number three, that looks fine. It was just a residential house. Number four, I didn't find any issues, so that bond is good to be released. And 238 Hall Ave has completed their site work, and that bond is good to be released.
Okay. And as Mr. Allison has taken a brief break, I'd ask Mr. Perrin if you would please vote on any motions that would be made concerning the bond releases. And at this point, at this particular point in time, I'd entertain motions to release the various bonds as recommended by our town planner. Mr. Fitzsimmons?
Mr. Chairman, I apologize. I have a question to the town planner on number five.
Yep.
It says landscaping will have to be postponed until spring due to the current weather conditions. None of the bond amount we're holding is for landscaping?
No. And I've gotten written confirmation that the landscaping will be completed, and it's signed by him as well. I didn't know if it was fair to hold up the bond.
Yeah, no, this has been a challenging one. So, Mr. Chairman, based upon recommendations from the town planning office, I recommend the release and reduction of bonds for number three, Alfonso and Maria Laquory; number four, Cata Zarua at 150 South Main Street; and number five, Hall Avenue, as recommended by the town planner.
Good. And Mr. Allison, just to make you aware of, I asked Mr. Perrin to vote in your place as when Mr. Pacini was discussing the bond releases, you were not available. So with that, I'd entertain a motion, a second rather, on the motion to release the bonds as recommended. Second by Mr. Cohen, voting beginning with Mr. Hein.
Yes.
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 Hey, thank you. Moving on, Mr. Pacini.
Administrative approvals. There was just one survey waiver this month, and that was it. And I have Amy here to discuss the ZBA enforcement report and how she plans on setting it up moving forward.
Mrs. Torrey, the floor is yours.
Okay. The theme of the evening is measurement. And so the best way I could figure to approach it, although, you know, we're all a bit weary, is to offer your input to me from what you'd like to see. Because what we've been providing you is a laundry list of how good the data entry is in our office, not how enforcement is happening. So it's not measuring the correct items. It's a database. There's things that don't go on the database because the activity is occurring, and perhaps it's wrapped up and closed without ever making it. So you don't see that. You don't see the fields, for example, legal referrals. That was raised at the last meeting. You see a laundry list of violations over time, 10 iterations of access, which it's provided on, that are not compatible with one another and our systems. So I can't really manipulate the data to come up with a report. So to that end, what is the information I may provide you with? And I will design either a report, whether it be in text format, an Excel spreadsheet, but this is where we're at. So we keep providing you a report that is meaningless, or it's not getting the information you need to see. So the best measure is what do you want to measure, and what can I offer you, and in what kind of form?
Commission members with some input for Mrs. Torrey, or is what they would like to see on the report? Cohen.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, just, you know, I think the old one was, you know, a pretty good start. I mean, you got, you know, the date, you know, the violation comes in, you know, first notification date, you know, resolution date, you know, any type of, you know, follow-ups that you've done and, you know, maybe not had, you know, success with the, you know, violator, you know, how many times you've, you know, gone out to their house to say, you've got to get rid of that rooster. You know, I think, you know, legal referral might be a good one. Just don't have to get into details, but, you know, checkbox. And, yeah, the, you know, the nature of the violation. I think I said that.
Mr. Fitzsimmons?
I would agree with Commissioner Cohen, and I would be remiss if I didn't say, thank you, thank you, thank you. It's not a... It's a thankless job, I'm sure. But we... You and I have discussed zoning violations and perceived zoning violations. I think I would agree with the comments that Commissioner Cohen said. I would... I like the format. If I heard correctly, it's an access database, which no one's using anymore, right? Or...
I should correct myself what it is. Again, it really is a measurement of how...
Sure.
You would like me or staff, support staff, to expound their time. Because it's... A violation is created, and not always... And Mr. Cohen's reference to the rooster is a perfect example. We sort of have a process for some of these recurring, smaller, seem to resolve themselves violations where, you know, automatic notice goes out. It's not a violation. It's sort of a, hey, did you know?
Mm-hmm.
And 99% of the time, they're rectified. I get a phone call. It's all gone. It never hits the database.
Yes.
And then the opposite is true. You have these things where, as referencing these old ones which were created, activity is this thick in a file, and handwritten notes, and phone calls, and serviced by marshals, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. All you're seeing is an open date. Or, of course, habitual, you know, it gets closed, it gets reopened. So it's a great thing to archive our history for compliance issues, to reference, to use that database. What I mean is, it's not that access isn't working. It's gone through so many evolutions and updates that it's almost impossible to manipulate it, to capture the data you want. So we're almost at a startover point.
Yep.
You know, what information you want to have, because it's not being presented to you. It's basically, I'm pushing a button on a report and saying, oh, I didn't get 20 things logged into that yet. Doesn't mean 20 things weren't worked on.
Right.
So that's where we're at. So this is a perfect time to start fresh.
I would agree with how you said, if I might, Mr. Chairman. I think I'd agree. You should get credit for everything that's reported and resolved before it even gets a chance to, you know. So you almost need a tally at the beginning, you know. Violations reported, violations closed, violations still open. It's a scorecard, like a baseball scorecard, so to speak. I have asked several times to have the list sorted chronologically. So it's kind of like the police blotter, which runs every Sunday in the Record Journal. It shows you the date that someone got pulled over, the time, but it's in chronological order. That's... I get and respect the fact that we can see the rooster complaints and the illegal dwelling complaints. I think for me, because I think I was concerned, was some of these are so old, and the only other question I had was, and we started this meeting three plus hours ago about enforcement, your job is so important, I need to know that everything is moving. And I say that to you because I know, you know, next month's meeting, we have somebody who's a zoning violation that I've talked to you about numerous times, finally coming into P and Z, but it's just, it took forever. It took forever just to get them to apply. I know there's a lot of work on your part to get people to do that. But the other piece of it is, and I'm sorry she's gone, is any referrals to legal. Because if we're about to add a regulation, that's going to require a lot more effort. All zoning enforcement should have some documentation of effort. And so all I'm looking... I'm personally looking for is what's been referred to legal and kind of a scorecard. There's a lot of violations, and I know all of us who sit up here hear people say, how could you guys allow that? How... And my favorite... Listen, it's a zoning violation. If you don't want to call it in, I'll call it in. But then I hear, well, nothing's happening. And I know things are happening, and I, you know... So I just want you and us, you particularly, to get credit for what's happening, but also, is there 10 things in legal or is there 50 things in legal? That's the issue. I don't know. So that's what I have.
Thank you. Other commission members? Again, from my perspective, I think some of the comments that were made were very good, but from the ones that are in legal, especially some of the old ones, is, you know, we have, you know, it's been referred to legal and whenever, and that's what we have. I guess I... Well, I'm sure there's a very thick file. I'm not interested kind of what's at the bottom of the file. I'm kind of interested in, from a legal standpoint, what's at the top of the file as far as where do we stand today? I know it's been referred, because there were a couple that, you know, we had talked about, and not to pick on cheap auto rental, because that's been around for whatever. But again, with that one, I'm not sure if it's back in legal or wherever it is, but, you know, what's the status of that and what's the action plan? Is that just... It's been referred to legal, and I'm not picking on any department because I'm sure people are working diligently on a lot of things, but is that just kind of sitting there in some...
It's out of our... It's out of zoning.
Yeah. Oh, no.
We've exhausted all measures.
Oh, no. Well, that's what I mean, but it's just...
So once it goes to legal, it's not worked anymore at the court system.
Yeah, I know. But see, with something like that, though, I just, you know, kind of, just like, just an update on that, as far as what's the most current thing with it? Okay, it's in legal, but what are we doing? And with some of the other violations that Mr., you know, Fitzsimmons brought up last month as far as with multifamily and illegal dwellings, with that, how is that being handled? It's on our zoning enforcement log. It's shown up as a violation, but again, what's happening with that is, is a fire marshal gone out there? Do they have some authority to issue whatever? I'm not sure. The building department, do they have some responsibility, or they have some authority to do that? So just, how are things like that progressing? That's kind of where my interest is.
So if I'm understanding correctly, I just want to clarify. Are you looking for sort of scorecard for the month? Because that's what it is. It's a monthly order. Again, it sort of just reproduce everything, which means, oh, I never closed, or cheap autos. Forgive me for picking on you. But a perfect example, it was referred years ago, and a stipulated agreement was entered into of, you know, way before my tenure, probably three iterations ago. So there is no work on that. It's... So to respond to what's the status of it, it would be to the legal department and the town attorneys, who are taking it out of the hands. I can certainly provide you with dates to say, I've exhausted everything I can do, that being a whole other issue, is having teeth.
Sure.
You know, love to, like the roosters, you know, most times we can just kind of say, well, you probably didn't know, so maybe, you know, but you can't have them, and it generally will work. So I, you know, have to work those angles. But then you have the derius and the times. And for example, the accessory apartments are another good thing that's not reflected on there, illegal dwelling units. If it is something that's able to become a legal dwelling unit, even if it's in arrears, very often you're getting the applications which are results of those, but the two things aren't speaking. You're... So that's the remedy. Of course, we know there's folks that attempt a variance to after the fact. And once again, not being successful, that's now sent to court. So it's out of the hands. So... But anyway, love to give you a scorecard. If you're looking at a month, sort of, that's, I mean, come to my desk. I'll take a picture of, you know, my... It's all a bunch of handwritten notes and phone slips and, you know, where do you have to be? But, you know, to consolidate that into the information that is a measure of what you're... The information you're seeking, I'd rather give you that than to say, this is silly. I'm not going to print that same report again. That I didn't get to fill in a field yet. Didn't mean it didn't happen. Like, maybe I did close it, but the data entry didn't happen yet. So it's still showing open, open. Or clean up the old stuff that's just hanging around that isn't even a violation anymore. It's just still sitting on the database. So again, would rather give you something that is informative.
Yes, Mr. Fitzsimmons?
If I could jump back to something the chairman said, you know, and this is, it's awful. We all saw the news this weekend about that awful fire yesterday in the Bronx. And my day job is insurance, you know. Sitting in on claims calls when people talk about things, illegal dwelling units or illegal residents is a problem. And I, you know, we've debated this because certain towns and municipalities and certain law firms will say, well, the town knew about it, they're liable. In addition to the building owner and everything else, the illegal dwelling, whether it be, you know, an unapproved rooming board or an unapproved accessory apartment, that we're serving electrical and water. That's the question I'm thinking of, and that's why I was concerned, because at first you had, you know, there's been two major fires just in the last couple of weeks with loss of life. I assume they're properly zoned, but if they weren't, and it's the Bronx, it'll be awful. And we, you know, I think of the Hall Avenue project that we just released the bond to, that that should never have happened the way it did. You know, we did everything we were supposed to. You did everything you were supposed to, and come to find out they didn't have COs. You know, it wasn't a zoning violation, but something slipped, something dropped. So I remain concerned about dwelling units and resident, you know, and life safe, healthy issues, in addition to what's been referred to legal.
Couldn't agree more.
As much as the roosters. Don't miss it. Roosters are important, human life's important, but, you know...
The level of property transfers has yielded many, many more refinances, et cetera, of many of these dwellings. And of course, the market is conducive to that now, so all of a sudden...
Sure.
And we do try to, just so you know, because that is very upsetting to me as well, just trying to appeal to people, never mind, I know you're violating, but you could be putting people at serious risk if it's not up to fire code, or they're stuffed in a basement or wherever the case may be. And believe it or not, sometimes that works. And those don't make it either with the roosters, because they get a little nervous and, you know, then think of others. Duly noted. I will work on it. We'll give you a sample first round next month. That's something, again, that's informative, but I am certainly available as we're kind of trying to come up with this to put what you want in it. I'm not going to design something that works for me. I'd rather have it inform you, so...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're up, Mr. Pacini.
I have no further comments. She does a lot of work that she can't necessarily, doesn't have time to log, so I understand where she's coming from. Maybe I'll just put a dry erase board in the office, and she can mark it up as they go off.
So with that, I take it it brings us to the end of our agenda. Is that correct?
Yes. That's... That was the last item.
Terrific. At this point in time, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adjourn until Valentine's Day.
Second.
You're always a romantic's reminder of that, Mr. Fitzsimmons. We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, we're adjourned. Have a good evening, gentlemen.